Good morning. Madam Clerk, are you ready? Okay. Tech, are we all ready? Okay. And we have Commissioner Hill, Vice Chair Hill. Are you on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
Okay, very good. I will call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 40. It is now 10:00 a.m. We will start with a salute to the flag. Mr. Roger Edwards, since you're standing up, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, sir?
I'm proud to. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Von Hartung Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill Vice Chair via Zoom.
Here.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Ed Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number three?
Item three is an appearance and presentation by Dr. Krishna Pagila, Ph.D. and University of Nevada Reno team with an update on investigations of SARS-CoV-2 prevalence and variants through wastewater surveillance.
Dr. Pagila, it's always a pleasure to see you. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Hartung, Commissioner Lucy, Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Hill, and Commissioner Jack. Good morning. I'm happy to present to you our work, which we've been doing since the beginning of pandemic, for the record. My name is Krishna Pagila. I'm a professor at the University of Nevada Reno and also director of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. If we can go to the next slide, this is the outline of my presentation. I'm going to talk about three things and next steps after that. And I'm here joined by my team. I will introduce them in a minute. Primarily, we're going to talk about how we are monitoring wastewater to assess COVID prevalence or COVID-19 prevalence in the community. This is a very, very useful tool which we have developed early in the pandemic, and we've been using it. And of course, it's supported regionally by the county, the city of Sparks and city of Reno. Here is the group. Some of them are here. I have here right in the front row Dr. Subhash Verma from the University of Nevada Reno College of Medicine. He's helping us in some of that leading-edge tools to understand how the variants are evolving in the community. We'll talk about that. And then I have Dr. Lynn Lee and Dr. Laura Hock are the two people who are leading the field work and the laboratory work. And they have really developed many of the analytical and sampling tools to make a tool that we had for monitoring water, water purification for COVID-19 monitoring using wastewater as a media. So we've been doing this since almost June of 2020, when the pandemic was declared and we had the tools to monitor this. So in-house, we had to develop the technology to monitor SARS-CoV-2, which is the virus that causes COVID-19. And what I'm showing you here is the results from October of 2021 till about two weeks ago, when we had sent you the presentation about a week ago. And what you have in this figure in the bottom right is the sewer sheds in the region. The big blue, which you see is the Tamwhar, the largest watershed, which is serving about 330,000 people. The north half is the city of Sparks and some of the Washoe County sewer shed area. And then the southern part of that blue is the city of Reno and the southern part of -- and then you see the reddish-purple. At the bottom is the South Truckee Meadows, and on the top are the three North Valleys watershed. In between is the -- of those three is the Reno Stad. So we basically monitored Tamwhar every day, the influent wastewater that's coming to Tamwhar, which gives us a snapshot of the whole community in terms of how the concentrations of the virus is changing in the wastewater, which reflects the number of cases or the prevalence of the disease in the neighborhood. And I had -- we had also done several neighborhoods, about 12 neighborhoods. Laura Hock was leading that effort, and we continue to do those, and we'll show some hotspots data as well. So if you look at that figure, it is split into three plots. The first plot is the first peak of COVID-19, and then the Delta variant, and then the last one is the Omicron, which has been since late December. And on the left side, vertical axis, you see the virus concentrations in a unit called gene copies per liter, and it's in millions of copies per liter of wastewater. And on the right, you see are the daily new cases per 100,000 population, as reported by Washoe County Health District. So early in the pandemic, we took the data from Washoe County Health District and said that if there are 100 cases in the community, what should be the concentration of the virus in the wastewater? So we correlated that, and then we got into a lot of data analysis and modeling to be predictive, to say that if we have this concentration in the wastewater, how many likely cases are there in the community? So this is primarily dealing with the Tamwhar sewer shed. So you can see that the gray, the skyline type of picture in the background, which is not so clear because of a little bit more light, is the number of cases reported by Washoe County Health District. And the darker lines you see is the concentration plot on a daily concentration basis. They track very well. In fact, we have the ability to be predictive by about a week. So let me -- if you can see that Omicron was the most, you know, prevalent, you know, of the three waves, even though Delta did lot of damage, even at lower concentration. But Omicron was a rapid peak and came down. And recently, in April, we saw a slight increase. Actually, you can see that yellowish line to the right of the figure, and that was reflected in the cases as well. But what is happening now is with home testing and lack of testing, because the symptoms are not as severe as they used to be in Delta and even in early Omicron, we don't see that good correlation between what is happening in terms of the cases. But in fact, we send this data to all the community agencies, including the county officials and the health district officials, cities of Reno and Sparks, and they are looking forward to this information. We send this information every Friday morning, an updated report, reporting the previous week's results. And that has been a very useful tool. In fact, Health Officer Kevin Dick responds immediately within 10, 15 minutes. He's eager to see the report and get the information. And this is the same figure. We just want to show you how, if you look at the box on the top, the peak of the SARS-CoV-2 in wastewater, that's the concentrations that are happening, and the peak of the COVID-19 cases in the community, this is from the Omicron wave, you can see that the wastewater concentrations occur about a week in advance of the expected cases in the community. So we can use this wastewater concentrations as a predictive tool by about a week in our sewer shed, in the Tamwhar sewer shed. And this is being done around the country in several cities, and depending upon the size of the sewer shed and complexity, it could be a few days early warning or almost as much as two weeks of early warning. So it's become a very useful tool. In fact, CDC is driving nationwide effort to collect this data across the nation, and they have engaged private laboratories, although they are doing for smaller periods. But for us, we have been collecting this data almost two years now. And one of the things that we're doing, as I mentioned to you, is that we monitored several regions in the Washoe County area. But more recently, we have been monitoring certain tourism-related sites like casinos and hotels, and then also elementary schools. So basically, what we learned from this, that the tourist sites act as a leading indicators of national trends. And you will see, Dr. Verma did some of the variants analysis, that we've been able to detect the variants, the new variants in the wastewater from the tourist sites much before we detected it in the community. So this basically shows that the hotels and the casinos kind of are leading. If you see the pillars, the bars, we start seeing those concentrations before the cases. The cases are shown by those two curves, well in advance of the cases happening in the community. So we believe that those tourist-related sites are a very good way for us to see how the infection is coming into the community. And then the neighborhoods and the school sites kind of more reflect what is happening in the community, within the community transmission type of stuff. And we have monitored several schools, and basically, the moral of the story is that it's a lagging indicator of what is happening in the community. If you see the curves are, and we start seeing higher concentrations in schools, elementary school wastewater. We have here also a couple of the neighborhoods on the top and elementary school at the bar. So shifting gears, so we monitor the water reclamation facilities, we monitor the neighborhoods and the hotspots or representative spots. And then since beginning of last year, 2021, we've been starting to take our samples, and Dr. Verma in the School of Medicine does sequencing, which is similar to the tool that is used for human samples, and we can identify the variants that are in the community. So if you see the top figure, the bottom figure is very complicated. It'll probably take me a long time to explain, but on the top is Alpha, Delta, Omicron, and more recently, the Stealth Omicron, which is the newer versions of Omicron, which are very contagious. And those arrows shows that we have detected in the wastewater much before the first clinical case of these variants have been reported. Okay? For example, Omicron, we detected December 12th, and the first case of Omicron in Washoe County was around December 21st sample, of a human sample. Okay? So it's a tool that is not only tells us the prevalence of the disease, but also the variant. So this is something that we are using. This is another plot to show you, this is from our earlier data, where you see the Reno Sparks area, we collect the sample. So we compared the variants that are present in human specimens with the variants that are detected in the wastewater, and we have a perfect match there. Okay? So this is basically in the bottom right, you can see the variants, which are in the technical numbers. You hear these B117, B167.2. Now we are B112, and you know, so there are new variants coming up, and they're common, the Greek names are Alpha, Delta, and Gamma variants. What this figure shows is that the thing that I mentioned, that Omicron was detected in the wastewater before clinical cases. This work has been led by Dr. Verma, and it's been quite widely reported as well in the media, that we were able to detect Omicron in wastewater even before the cases were. So you can see that from left to right, if you see the red, it's basically Delta. It's actually Alpha, right, Subash?
Actually, Delta.
Red is Delta, and blue is Omicron, and then green is Stealth Omicron. Right? So basically, you can see how the prevalence of the variant goes from one to the other very rapidly, within two, three weeks of time. In fact, we went from Omicron to Stealth Omicron in a matter of few days. So this is unheard of in virology. Dr. Verma is a specialist in that. I'm just presenting it so that we don't have -- a lot of us are transitioning, so. So what are we doing next steps? Using the same tools, the same specimens we collect from the wastewater, now we are screening for other respiratory viruses and other pathogens. This is really a tool for us to understand community health. And you can see from January of 2022, March 2022, April 22, you won't be able to see the -- but you can see how in January, it was SARS-CoV-2, which is the dominant virus in the community. And then as we came to March, as the SARS-CoV-2 virus concentrations decreased, other viruses like Boca virus, like influenza flu, all those start showing up in a significant concentrations. Now, come to late April, again, the SARS-CoV-2 concentrations are decreasing, and then, you know, the other viruses are picking up. So something is always there in the community, so relatively, what does the concentrations tells us what's happening in the community? Okay? So also, we are developing this tool to be predictive intelligence for community health. One of the big concern that worldwide is that use of antibiotics and therefore antibiotic resistance in the community, which can be determined by measuring antibiotic resistance or antimicrobial resistance genes, it's called AMR, through wastewater surveillance. And we've been able to find that. Several antibiotics resistance genes are present in the wastewater, and we can really -- and this is what across the nation, across the world, people are looking at is. Now wastewater surveillance is non-intrusive, means we don't need to go and take samples from people directly, but more of a collective community health surveillance tool. So with that, that's my last slide. I want to thank the commission, and particularly, I want the commission for the support you have given five years ago to establish the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. Commissioner Lucy, you were there. Commissioner Hartung, you were there in the rotunda of the MIKC at UNR. And we are turning five years. We hope to have another celebration in September to celebrate five years. We'll be working with Mr. Solaro and Mr. Smith about what we're going to do for the next five years. So this is really the capacity that you've built by supporting the Nevada Water Innovation Institute gave us the ability to pivot and use what we have, expertise and capacity, to address a community health issue that the pandemic threw at us. With that, Commissioner Hartung, in my presentation, I'll be happy, my team will be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pagila. And, you know, I was -- the first time we met with the work that you were doing just in water treatment, and you've taken us a long way, not the least of which is the work that is going on out on American Flats in the North Valleys, and of course, some of the work that's going to hopefully happen out in Palomino Valley. So that's -- and this is just some icing on the cake. Commissioners, do any of you have any questions? Mr. Lucy, I think I have you signed in. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Pagila, always a pleasure to see you. What a wonderful, I mean, amazing work that you're doing up at the innovation campus, I think. This is tremendous. To see five years where you have gone with just the science and the technology, it's just amazing. And this is, this just absolutely blows my mind. I mean, what a way to really be innovative with wastewater that's non-invasive to a household or to an individual, but you still be able to predict on a, you know, on a public scale, the abilities of what's going on, what are we seeing, you know, we're going to see influenza ramp up? Are we seeing different things? And those tales through wastewater. It's tremendous. So my hat is off to you. And now, obviously, this is going to continue to evolve, and you're going to trace this. So relatively, this is going to be an ongoing path, correct, for the innovation campus to continue to services this wastewater studies?
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner Lucy. In fact, you're giving me a lot of credit. I got a very, very good team, you know. You saw the --
You do have a tremendous team, I know.
There are a large group of people who, in fact, we couldn't show the pictures. So I want to really acknowledge their efforts greatly. But this is ongoing, Commissioner Lucy. In fact, what we found is that we still want to do our water-related work, cleaning water how-to. So in fact, Laura is right now working on Western Regional Water Commission-funded, a one-year effort to look at building frameworks for source control of contaminants means. So we are going around, we will go around in the neighborhoods, collect the same samples and measure them for these contaminants of emerging concern that may be of relevance for us when we want to reuse the advanced purified water, whether for irrigation or for, you know, American flat, where we will store it in the ground for future use. So this is a tool we're going to be using for a very, very long time to come, in addition to the public health aspects of it.
This is tremendous. And, you know, you're right. Dr. Verma has done a phenomenal job. I mean, Dr. Lee, I see her back there. She's done -- your whole team has been phenomenal. And one other question I have, though, you know, and maybe, Dr. Verma, you can answer this, obviously, from a medical standpoint, the viral load that you're finding in the water, the wastewater, obviously, once that viral load is in the wastewater, that's going to go through the filtering process and whatnot, how long does that, how long is that residue? Is that staying? I mean, that viral load, is it staying there for quite some time, once you've purified the water? I mean, what's it take to get that viral load out of that?
So I think it's a combined question for both of us, because virus, what is there in the wastewater, it's not infectious?
Okay.
It's just a genetic material as a marker.
So the, okay, the genetic material and the markers are there. So it's not actually the virus? So the viral load is no longer active?
It's no longer active, that's correct.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucy, I didn't show all of the presentation in the interest of time, but beginning of the pandemic, we don't have Nilofor, who had led that effort among our team, is that we monitored the genetic marker concentrations coming into Tamwhar, and then we monitored, there are like four-step treatment process for major steps. And we monitored every step time-relayed from the time we took the influent wastewater samples. And we showed that the viral marker eliminated by the time it reaches the third step in the existing treatment plan. We knew that, but for public comfort and for public to understand
Yeah.
-- that you can go into the lake or the river, and you don't have, in the beginning, none of us knew about this thing. You know, hey, you know, is it safe for me to go into the river, Truckee River?
Right.
We showed right in the beginning, and we published in a peer-reviewed journal, scientific journal, that SARS-CoV-2 markers through a water reclamation facility, by the time we get to the third step, it's completely eliminated, you know.
Awesome.
And after fourth step, you have absolutely, unequivocally, you can say that there is no traces of even the markers in the clean water that's coming out of the water reclamation facility.
Wow. Once again, thank you. And tremendous work. My hat is off to you and your team. You guys have done a wonderful job up there, all of you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're too humble to say this, but I really want to thank our chair, Commissioner Hartung, who gave you your seed money, I believe, about five years ago. Probably the first municipality or government official who paid any attention even to what you were doing over there. And I know the fact that you were published in a peer-reviewed journal, as well as I've heard your work on national news, and it is something that I think Commissioner Hartung can hang his hat on. I know he was, his intention, when giving you the money five years ago, was to start really accelerating where we're reclaiming our water, living in the high desert. But the way that it turned out was a happy coincidence, is that we had this terrible pandemic, and you could pivot and really show the work of, and the value of being able to get more, I believe this will be with all disease now that's contagious, you will be able to be a tool in the toolbox to let us know where these spot fires are starting to light up, so we know where to avoid. Because last time I checked, I never like to be sick. I have a sick phobia. I can't stand to be sick, and I'm a terrible sick person, too, because I think I'm dying, I get health anxiety. So I think this is a great step forward for the overall community health of Washoe County, thanks to our chairman, Von Hartung, who really made us the case up here, because I think some people were a little bit trepidatious and unsure where we were going with this. But I'm so proud of my chairman and this board, that we were the first to get out there and really start to do some creative problem solvings in a constrained valley that we live in. So happy accident, but I'm happy to be along for the ride for the happy accident. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. I concur with all of the things that you said, and I want to tell you that in addition to your board, the county leaders, including Mr. Smith, who was at the first meeting when we were envisioning Nevada Water Innovation, at that time, we called it Nevada Water Innovation Campus, Mr. Solaro, and in fact, County Manager Brown, when he just joined the county, he came over to my office, and he says, what can we do for you? And I said, you are already doing a lot, so we will come and ask you when we need anything new. But it's been a tremendous, in fact, the university recognizes that what we have done through Nevada Water Innovation Institute, it is really a community engagement at its best. It's university utility partnership to advance, you know, what we are trying to do together.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. You give me too much credit. It's easy to support brilliant people. I mean, it's easy. I still pinch myself. In the very beginning, I pinched myself when Dr. Pagila left Chicago and decided to come here. What a, I mean, you could have, he could have landed anywhere in the world. My question is a little, excuse me, is a little different. Is this the precursor to all kinds of diseases, potentially Parkinson's, or Alzheimer's, or cancer clusters? Is this, can we potentially detect those ailments in wastewater?
So I guess it's a very interesting question, that's what I would say. And if there are genetic markers for any disease which are shed in the wastewater, we may be able to detect, but infectious agent, we know there is a cause, like there is a virus or bacteria in the body, and they get shed in the wastewater, and we can pick them up. But identifying those biomarkers for other diseases is very critical, like you said, Alzheimer, that is certainly. If there is some marker which we can identify, that is related to Alzheimer, and we'll start looking for those marker in wastewater, and that may be a predictive measure to say, okay, what's the proportion of people who have this disease or biomarker in the community? So certainly, yes, it's like a looking forward approach. I guess this is the best thing. I think I have heard the question. I guess nobody asked me this question. Can you also predict other diseases which are not because of infectious agent, because of like cellular factors or cells, like brain cells, they die and all? But maybe, I mean, future, it's all about research and development. We have to probably identify those markers and then look for those markers in the wastewater. But certainly, it's an interesting question.
Right. And again, this is the precursor to those
Yeah.
-- kinds of future pieces of research. And I, all I can say is, thank God, you, we have some, we have a team like yours working on this stuff. I mean, it's amazing. We are blessed.
Yeah, certainly. And the support from the county, I guess, that's the, makes it very, I mean, important for us to continue this work. And we will continue doing this as long as we are having the support. I mean, that's certainly important for us to continue monitoring bacteria, virus, and other markers in the wastewater. And thank you again for the support you have provided us.
Well, you know, Commissioners, this is one more example of what an amazing school UNR is. I mean, and it is a, it is a very highly-ranked university, and it's right here in our own backyard. It's just, I mean, these are, these are rock stars. You're exactly right.
Thank you very much, yeah, for the acknowledgement that, yeah, we are doing good at university, and we'll continue to do so.
Commissioner Hill, Vice Chair Hill, do you have any questions for Dr. Pagila or his team?
No, I just want to thank him for his work and the team's work, and this is very important, has definitely helped us with our COVID risk meter and coordinating with the Health District, and will, it seems like will continue to help us as a region. So I really appreciate the update, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your progressive support of this group.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I know that they'd like to take a photograph with us. So we're going to just take a real short break and make a picture here, and then we'll come right back. Absolutely.
All right. Thanks. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
You know who we didn't have?
Okay.
Who was the, it's not, who was the old, started with Watson? No. Who used to be here at County when I went to? Warner. Rick Warner.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, thank you so much. That takes us now into item number four. Mr. Manager.
Item four is an appearance and presentation by Mitch Fink, P E, of a quarterly update on traffic related items in unincorporated Washoe County as requested by the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Fink, welcome. Nice to see you in person and not just on emails.
Yes, thank you.
I know you're out in the field constantly.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mitchell Fink. I'm with Washoe County Engineering and the Community Services Department. My focus is primarily on traffic safety. So this morning, we're here to give you an update on our traffic calming and traffic engineering policy. It was adopted by Washoe County in 2019. Our traffic policy allows for the residents to have a straightforward process that allows them to be educated on our requests and review processes for traffic calming and traffic engineering or, and/or operational items. Traffic calming requests typically are speeding and the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists. The other category is a traffic engineering request, which are mostly for traffic control type devices, striping, signage, pedestrian crosswalks, school flashers and traffic signals. Our primary focus is the safety of the pedestrians and traveling public. The traffic related requests that are received, identified and prioritized, typically they're called in through phone calls and emails through Washoe 311. Also, they come up to the engineering counter in our department and also through the Board of County Commissioners, we also get requests through them as well. The 311, we use to help process the request and track the responses to those requests. We also condition new development that comes through is we, some of those, those conditions that we use are certain like roadway geometry to help reduce speeding throughout subdivisions. We also have the development, the development community provide traffic calming mitigation to, again, help reduce some of these traffic related safety issues. We've also had them add additional improvements such as rapid flasher beacons and those type improvements for our pedestrian safety. We do work with our regional partners, especially Sheriff's Office, Regional Transportation Commission, NDOT, and our other jurisdiction partners through City of Sparks and Reno. And on those, we do intersection control evaluation analysis with them and review, regional multimodal projects, road safety audits and corridor studies such as Long Pyramid Highway or Mount Rose, the Mount Rose Corridor. From that, all that information priority lists are generated for future projects to allow for traffic calming, traffic operations mitigations. So our traffic calming requests, again, are primarily based on speed reduction and pedestrian safety improvements. We've had at least 45 requests since the last time we did our presentation about a year ago in May 2021. Residents are contacted through websites, phone calls, emails. And again, they're given, they're given copies of the traffic policy as well as the forms to fill out for the traffic calming requests. And typically, we like to have those go through our Washoe 311. So we provide an assessment for these to determine if there's mitigation required or not. These include speed studies, speed and volume studies to determine such things as like the 85th percentile, how much people are speeding. Typically, we, in the county, we see that 85th percentile speed, about seven miles over a posted speed limit. So in this case, say 25 mile an hour, which is the standard residential speed limit, we would see typically about a 32, 33 mile an hour speed that 85% of the road uses are driving that. We also have the radar feedback guns that we use. We also have a radar trailer that we've just put into usage that can collect data as well, as well as provide enforcement. We also can look at the peak hour traffic patterns to help make determinations as well for traffic mitigation. We do work in collaboration with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for enforcement because enforcement is one of the most useful and effective tools for, especially for speeding. So we've had some, some outcomes where we were able to mitigate through traffic calming methods. These methods can be the installation of speed cushions, radar feedback signs, rapid flasher beacons, even just striping or additional signage. We do have some priority lists being made up as far as allowing for future projects so that we can, again, provide those traffic mitigations where we need them most. And then in some cases, there are requests that, that have, were found that there was no mitigation required. Our traffic engineering operational requests are everything outside of the speeding and the pedestrian safety improvements. And typically, those, those include your school flashers, traffic signals, signage and striping, pedestrian crossings, and requests for always stop, sign installations at intersections. Again, we go through the same process with contacting the customers for those requests. And this, this one as well, we go do field visits to do intersection evaluations. We collect data for vehicle speed and volumes as well as for pedestrians, bicyclists, look at crash data, zoning and land uses and also site visibility. We've had similar outcomes with mitigation. Again, some of these are can be as simple as just installing no parking signs, just painting curbs red. Those can increase site visibility at intersections. We do have other requests for installation of rapid flasher beacons, improved conditions on crosswalks. One of our biggest items that we work with is the school district for safety of our, the school children in the school zone. So that's one of our priorities for, especially for crosswalks. And there was obviously some requests that we found that mitigation wasn't required based on our traffic calming policy. Some examples of some projects that we've just completed, one was on Alena Way Emergency Access Road. So the existing gate was damaged and it wasn't operable, so the road was open to access private land for off road through a lot of motorized vehicles. So it's creating a lot of dust and noise for the residents. There's a subdivision on one side and then the, the high school on the other. So with our improvements, we blocked the access to the private land as well as install the gate. And the residents that do have backyard access do have keys that they can access through the gate to still, you know, bring their trailers in and out as needed. Some examples of a traffic engineering would be the installation of rapid flasher beacons. So the rapid flasher beacons are the push buttons that allow the flashing lights for pedestrian crossing. So we've, we've installed some over at Arrow Creek over by the Hurst Middle School. And out in Cold Springs, we did have our generous donation from lifestyle homes that allowed us to install multiple rapid flasher beacons in crosswalks out in Cold Springs. We've also been working with regional partners, NDOT and City of Reno for horse flasher mitigation or horse, wild horse mitigation through the use of additional horse flasher signs on Geiger Grade and Toll Road. And to summarize the update, so the approved policy just provides, again, a straightforward and deliberate, consistent process for the residents to request traffic calming and traffic engineering. So we've reviewed at least 95 requests since last year. That includes traffic calming as well as traffic operations. I've had about 25 of the requests that there were saved issues that needed to be resolved and we're continuing to work in prioritizing those to make that happen. We do work with our Sheriff's Office, regional partners like RTC and the other jurisdictions to help educate, enforce and implement safety measures. And we do, again, collaborate to, with those corridor studies, the evaluations and road safety audits. So Commissioners, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay. I know I've got a bunch of questions. Commissioner Lucy, did you want to lead off?
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate it. Mr. Fink, thank you for coming down and I really do appreciate this. Now, obviously, in District Two, there are a number of roads and it's very challenging and visualize county roads to get to those very quickly. Speeds are challenged. And the other thing is development has moved up not in the cities, but also in the county. Probably needs on some of these roads quicker than they have in years past. And so intersections that may not have, not had more way stop or been satisfied with just a two way stop now seem to be requiring more moves as it begins to speeding, just traffic calming together. Overall, I know we have an outline plan and policy within the county, but how do we go about some of these one offs, some of these challenging, some of the more challenging intersections, some of the more challenging road sections that we've, we've identified, obviously, either through community outreach or whatnot? What are we doing to, do those move up in priority? Do they, do we find different solutions? What, I mean, I guess is the department being a little bit proactive and dynamic when it comes to certain solutions?
I think we have been. We have actually installed several multi always stops at intersections that may not have fully met what's per the MUTCD, the always stop warrants. But in a professional engineering opinion, it looked like that they were needed to help improve the safety of those intersections, you know, whether there's an increase of pedestrians at those intersections or maybe there's more cut through traffic going through based on those type of issues. So it's kind of an individual case by case at these.
So you are, so the department is willing to look at each individual case by case and take a stab at it? I know Chairman Hartung worked with you and Mr. Smith for quite some time to get some stop signs put in out in Spanish Springs. I've worked with you, your department to get stop signs put in and you've been very responsive. I just want to make sure that we're evaluating some of those different roads as they come in. And when you said it goes through the process in 311, once it hits 311, do you reach out to the Commissioner or the, of that district to kind of go, hey, look, we've got this, this is something that we'd like to talk to you about? Or is there, is there a different process that we can look at?
Typically, I'll go through, through the Director Dwayne Smith to speak through the, to the Commissioners on those policies, once we've had a discussion based on what that request is and the information that we've collected.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see some, maybe some evolution to this. I think that there's some of those one offs, especially as fast as the community has grown that we've seen just in the last 10 years. There are different needs that can't always be addressed in the MUT. And so I think that's why we want to make sure that we have that flexibility to look at specific areas and be a little bit more dynamic with the solution so that, one, citizens are safe, two, we have, you know, a little bit more cohesion with the development and making sure that we have, because there's definitely some challenges out there. South Valley's library, for example, you look at South Valley's library, going in and out of the library there, there isn't any traffic control on Wedge Parkway. And it can be nightmarish. It could be nightmarish. And people walking across the street, there's no sidewalk, you know, nothing. And so those are the kinds of things that I want to kind of continue to look at as we walk through this process because it is important to address those kinds of needs throughout the community and maybe just do some sort of a reassessment. How do we assess those roads? How do we assess those, you know, problematic intersections? So thank you, Chairman. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lucy. Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in next and then you, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate the update. I am with my Commissioner Lucy on, on concerns that we just make sure that the Commissioner understands where these requests are. I know the last time we received an update, we had asked, hey, can we sit down with you quarterly? And I still haven't received any updates. I know that I have community members who have expressed concerns in their neighborhoods and just getting an update on where those are at in my particular district would be extremely helpful. Additionally, I know we just approved the budget and there was a million dollars in there for pedestrian, public safety improvements. And I just wanted to make sure that you've got the money you need to be making these improvements and that the Commission has supported you in those efforts. I know that one of the slides said you were pending funding on those requests and I just wanted to, you know, get an update on what that would look like and that you have enough funding. And if Commissioners need to give allocations from our particular discretionary funds to make sure that these projects can happen for public safety in our districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we do, we are working on the, on the funding. We do have quite a few projects that do require that we found, require traffic calming or some kind of traffic engineering. So those just take time and they do take effort and also the contractor availability to complete those projects. So yes, certainly, we appreciate that, the funding that has been made available to us.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what you're trying to say here, Mr. Fink, is that there's a natural tension here of citizens and elected saying, here's where a stop sign needs to be. And the pushback is, of course, we don't want a stop sign every 10 feet because that would be a nightmare to a traffic engineer and totally contrary to what you have the credentials for to make these decisions. And so what I would suggest to this board, when somebody gets a hold of you for a traffic engineering issue, which I'm sure is pretty frequent, encourage your citizens to use 311 because then we have a full tracking of every single bit of attention and care or lack thereof, as well as a database that is recording all of these issues. So I've been telling my constituents to call 311, but in light of that, I do want to just help Ms. Carol Burns make her case. Sun Valley Boulevard and Clearacre Boulevard is a notorious cut through that RTC has yet to address. And I think it's another 20 years out and I think they need some traffic calming on people's favorite shortcut. That's why they go that shortcut because it's faster than the freeway and they can speed with impunity. So I'm just going to, while I made the case about use 31, and I hope Carol Burns did call because that's how I instructed them, I understand your lack of proactivity as well as trying to please us, but also trying to be an engineer. So I, you know, I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, you see, and now, and then I'm pressuring, I need something with Sun Valley and Clearacre. But I want to let you know, I appreciate that tension and I understand it comes from your subject matter expertise. And while I'm still here, I'll continue to use 311 and actually have the citizen, I was calling myself for 311 and I think 311 can tell you, I don't have all the details, I don't know what I'm talking about, it's, you know, it's third person narrative. So I'm just really trying to push the 311 so you can track the data too in terms of, well, maybe as Commissioner Lucy said, it doesn't meet the warrants for the, the traffic engineer from your perspective. But if he see, if you see that there is that much involvement and concern, I think what Commissioner Lucy was asking too, and Commissioner Hill, Vice Chairwoman Hill, was let's make sure we keep the electeds in the loop, even though I know that's scary because then we scream and holler and throw ourselves around and lay it scream and holler and throw ourselves around and lay it ourself on the ground and say, you have to do this, which is anti-great engineering. So I don't know how we're going to improve that process, but I know it creates a lot of tension for us. And most importantly, I think what 3-1-1 can do is to educate citizens when they do call in. What is the policy? What is the trigger point? What can you do? And maybe what Commissioner Lucy is asking too, what, when the, when the citizen is given that they don't meet the policy, what else can they do to make their community safer? And then my final blow for this one, and I'm going to beat it forever, is the fact that we don't go back and hold developers to their conditions after the CFO is released. And I still think you guys need to hire somebody for that, because that would make a big difference in a lot of these issues, because then they can go back to the developer and say, hey, man, you promised this and you didn't put this traffic calming device in. And listen, Reno and Sparks don't do it either. They have no staff that ensures that conditions of approval are held into perpetuity. But it is, it is an area that we probably need to invest in if this growth is going to continue as it is, and it sounds like it is. We have a lot of product coming onto the market in that halfway point. And the only, maybe we hire a regional person and we all pay into it, and that person goes and checks all the conditions and makes sure that those developers who are happy to tell us everything they want to hear, but there's nobody on the backside checking it off. And that would be no money to us, other than that regional person to do it. And I'm sure you'd need more than one. But all I can control is Washoe County. And I think developers hold a lot of responsibility here that we end up mitigating on behalf of them with our money, when really, the buyers of that property and their developer hold that responsibility, in my mind, so.
Thank you.
We're not going to solve that today. But I appreciate this, and I appreciate that there's a standard and, you know, I hate to say this, but I think you're going to get more of these rather than less coming in. But if we have a database and you can look at it as a region, it's going to be a lot better than doing these spot approaches, because a commissioner has thrown themselves around enough. So that's, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Jung. So I'll, I'll kind of do the pickup here. Sadly, what's happened, and this has happened everywhere, doesn't matter where you go, which community you go to, whether it's in Washoe County, or Elko, or, you know, Las Vegas, or any, any community, you can pick any community you want. We are suffering sort of the pangs of bad planning over the years, which did not introduce traffic calming in the road designs. It would, they were, you know, I live on a street that's long and straight and wide, and they're all over my neighborhood. And they, we never should have allowed that, but we just didn't think about that in, you know, in 1980, when my house was built. Or, or look at the subdivisions from the 40s, for God's sakes. I mean, it's, they're, again, long, straight streets, and there's, there's no traffic calming that has been planned into them. That said, I will tell you, because I know this to be true, for every call that we get, there's probably at least 10 others, maybe, maybe 15, who have not called us, who are thinking the exact same thing in their neighborhoods and just have not reached out to us or to 3-1-1. There's, there's a lot of demand and there's a lot of need out there. I will say, under then-Chairman Lucy at the RTC, RTC set aside some $300,000 as an initial amount to do some of these projects in, in these neighborhoods. That's split between the three municipalities. So the, the way that it was intended to be split was City of Reno, because of its size and its population, got 150,000, and then Sparks and Washoe County, each got 75,000. We're still working with RTC to try to get that funding up. I'd like to add some zeros on to that, because we have a lot of need. I mean, if we had more funding, we could certainly do more projects. That said, on, on your, I don't, I don't, there's no slide numbers on here, Mitch, I apologize. It says priority lists internally initiated. So talk to me about that. It's, it's, it's how traffic-related requests are received, identified, and prioritized. So, so talk to me about priority lists and internally, how are they initiated?
So in our traffic calming policy, there's a ranking, a scoring system.
Okay.
And that's based on, such as the number, the volume of traffic, the speeds of the traffic.
Okay.
Is there schools nearby? Are there parks nearby? Pedestrians and all those have a scoring system. And based on that scoring system is kind of how that priority, the priorities are generated as far as the need.
So let me tell you in my own neighborhood, because I happen to live a stone's throw from a school, not too very far, the worst, well, some of the worst offenders, not all, some of the worst offenders are parents driving their kids to school. I'm telling you, I, I, if, if.
It's true.
If you want to come and sit in my front window and watch them fly by with a cup of coffee some morning or some afternoon with some iced tea, let me know, because it will astound you. And we can stand out there with a radar gun. It is, it's astounding that the parents are actually the ones who are speeding up and down Sky Ranch. Now, in Sky, the problem with Sky Ranch is it's wide and it's straight. It's not a narrow street. And so it's easy for people to, to speed. I am the, I am the culprit. I'm the one who got speed bumps put on Sky Ranch. And I did that long before I was ever, even, I even thought about being elected. I did it as a Citizens Advisory Board member, and I walked the entire neighborhood and got signatures from everybody except one guy who didn't want speed bumps, because he had a trailer, and he didn't want to have to deal with speed bumps. But I got every single person on the street, except one, to agree to sign that petition. So petitions, I mean, that's, that's certainly one way. I get very frustrated, though, staff, with the MUTCD, with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I get frustrated with that, because it's this national manual. And while I understand the need for a manual to look at those kinds of issues, and it looks at all, all kinds of issues, we just recently got into an argument, as you're well aware, with NDOT on the Pyramid Highway, and they referred back to the MUTCD, saying, well, this is the national standard. But that doesn't mean anything on the Pyramid Highway. And I would encourage you to go and look at the tiger stripes that are at every intersection now from, from people skidding to a stop. It's frustrating, and that, and it came back from that MUTCD. So I, I understand the need to look at that, but I also get a little frustrated, because I think we depend on that too much. I will tell you, we fought tooth and nail as a neighborhood, and I was the elected to get a four-way stop at the corner of Cordoba and East Sky Ranch. I've not had one complaint about that stop sign. Every single person in my neighborhood, in fact, when, my last walk session during election time, I had so many people tell me that was one of the greatest things that we had done in that, on that side of the, of the neighborhood. So stop signs do work. I know that there's resistance on the part of staff to install them. I'm perfectly willing to hire some guys and go out and just put up stop signs for you. And you don't even have to acknowledge that we're putting them in. There's a bunch of places that we could use stop signs. And so, so I, I'm, I just, I get, I get a little frustrated, because I know we have to go through this big, long process, and, and we're still going through it over on Dolores, and I thank you for that. We can, we really do need to control that downhill traffic on Dolores. I don't, I don't think we see the speeds going uphill so much, but coming down, it's just easy to speed down that street. And so I know we're on track, the sooner the better would, would really be helpful for that. I appreciate the, the updates, and, and I know I've just given you guys some of my, my district funds, and I've also given you some discretionary funds that we have at RTC. So I'm, I'm more than willing to try to fight for more funding through our, or even in our own budget, because, you know, one accident that, that causes mayhem, and I won't go into, you know, what, what that could possibly be, it, it, we could have done. And, and so I look forward to, to working with these difficult neighborhoods, these older neighborhoods that designed properly. And not the fault of the planners or the designers, it was just the, it was the time, how everything was, was done. It was easy to lay those streets out and, you know, and they, they gave them, you know, nice letters or numbers, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, or, you know, 1, 2, you know, First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, you know? And, and they laid it out in this big grid pattern, and it seemed like a good plan at the time. But reality is, is we know that it's not a good plan in terms of, of traffic calming. And I don't know how we get people, my final statement, I don't know how we get people to understand that speeding in a neighborhood is not acceptable. Because if I, and when I see somebody speeding in my neighborhood, if I went to their neighborhood and sped, they'd be in an uproar. In fact, they'd probably call me. So I, I don't know how we, we change that pattern, that thought pattern, and it's, I don't, I don't, I don't even know whether we can, but it, it just seems to be more and more prevalent. Everyone is in more and more and more of a hurry. Commissioners, anyone else? Gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Just wanted to jump in for just a second, say thank you for the critical feedback. We appreciate those comments. We do incorporate those into our processes moving forward. So thank you very much for that. I also want to thank Mitch and the rest of the staff. To your point, Chair, we have been very diligent on looking at new development and how we incorporate traffic calming and traffic safety, narrowing roadways, putting those types of things which haven't been done before, and, and changing our development code standards to reflect those pieces. So I just wanted to comment, because I know Commissioner Jung has, has always been a proponent of best practices. So we're taking those things that we're learning and incorporating those in, to our reviews of our new developments. And then certainly what Mr. Fink is doing in the older existing neighborhoods, thank you for those budgets, because that's what we need to go back and work on those other areas. So thank you very much for that commitment.
And, and one, you know, one more thing, Mr. Smith. The, in, in those designs, maybe we need to just start thinking about complete street design that RTC is using, that multimodal design, because, because we know we have, especially in neighborhoods, we have a lot of people, my wife and I love to go out and ride our tandem. We, you know, we'll walk our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has no sidewalks. And so it's, it's, it's very dangerous. It's, I mean, we have wide streets kind of where we live, but you get on the side streets and they're, they're not so wide. So, so that thought process, and Commissioner Jung, to your point, maybe what we need to do, and, and I know that there's a cost to this, but if, if, if they're not following through on the conditions of approval, maybe what we need to do is, is have a bond. We force a bond. And we say, okay, you know, once the, once the conditions are met, once we have established that, that you met all of the conditions that, that were on the map, then we'll release you of that bond. If not, we'll go in and build them for you. I, I mean, I know it's a, I know it's a cost, but, but I mean, we've, we've got to do something. I mean, we really do have to do something. And Washoe County can lead the way in this. Okay, Commissioners, anyone else? Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Item five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
Of course. First up, we have Patricia Ann Bayless Berg.
Welcome, ma'am.
Hi. Welcome to me, to you, and to everyone, and those that I've already talked to. Thank you for responding to my calls. I'm here today, not for the first time, I've been here before. I came here several years ago with a room full of seniors. We jumped on buses and we went down to city, to the city of Carson City and were in the audience for a lot of the legislature that went on with regards to senior issues and fair housing and the cost of living. So this is my second time here, and just to give you some context about myself, I'm a resident in a senior village in Sparks. And I work for the Washoe County Sheriff's Emergency Response Team. I've been through the academy and I trained to triage if somebody died here today, or was in the process of dying or had a heart attack. I could save a life. I also work for the University of Nevada School of Medicine Sanford Center for Aging as a volunteer. I'm an ambassador for senior outreach services. I, I'm also a, on the Community Foundation Steering Committee. You've talked to one of our cohorts, his name's Nick, his, his last name starts with a T, it ends with a K, it's a long Greek name. I know you all know him, but he's also on the Community Foundation, which is a nonprofit. I'm also a senior in-service volunteer. I have two seniors, one's 94 years old, lives off Moana, and the other one is 81 years old, she lives off of Hunter Lake. So I do a lot of volunteer work in the area. And, and to bring you to the point of my being here today, I'm going to take you back to 1969. In 1969, I was hired on as a flight attendant for Universal Airlines, the largest cargo company in the world at the time. In 1969, my assignment was to fly to Vietnam with military in tow, in the, in the transportation of military soldiers and military men, young men, children, right out of high school, were going to Vietnam, and I was bringing back body bags and body parts in the stowage of the plane. My base was in New York, and 20 years later, I married the man that was there at the same time I was in Vietnam as a Vietnam sniper, my late husband, Steve. He passed away four years ago with complications of PTSD. He was, never went to the VA, never believed in asking for help. The man was just a solid, straight man that loved to be the life of the party and would love to.
Thank you, ma'am.
What?
That's your three minutes. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Real quick.
No, no. Nope, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Elise Wetherly, followed by Hawa Ahmad.
Welcome, Ms. Wetherly.
Good morning, Elise Wetherly. First of all, I wanted to say that I used to come here to complain. And now, since I have learned that I can get anything I want, I dislike productivity, and I see that in this group, and I'm very excited. Today is Emancipation Day. Today, a teenager is emancipated from me. Okay, so it's, it's all about the law, right? It's all about rules and regulations and all that kind of stuff. But I was going to come here with a hypothetical question, already knowing the answer to that. Have you ever been falsely accused of things? And I go, well, of course you have, you're in politics. That's what politics is all about, is trying to defend yourself against false allegations. So that's my only, my first experience with that was with the Highland Ranch Homeowners' Association, where I was not only harassed, but I was defamed, character defamation, right? So I had to go back and go, well, what is your character about? Well, it's about telling the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. That's what I did for decades here. Then I go into a home, Highland Ranch Homeowners' Association, and I want to follow the state of Nevada's laws and look at the books, and the next thing you know, I am being absolutely squeezed out. Well, most Highland Ranch Homeowners' Association members can't afford an attorney. You cannot stand up for what's right until you, unless you have the money to do so. Well, guess what? I do. So I will be, I do, I make the commitment that I will find an attorney. Maybe Joey Gilbert will finally return my call, going, if you want to stand up for, you know, if you want to fight, hey, how about fighting the victims instead of the criminals? Just a thought, right? Also, we are supposed to overcome evil with good. Well, that does not mean that I go in and just say, oh, you're forgiven Richard Allen Davis for murdering 12-year-old Polly Klaus? No. Good is, is having the law fall into place where that man is not just forgiven, right? We don't go to a, a love church, where you just forgive everybody everything, because you need to be forgiven. Well, yeah, I'm not a rapist, a kidnapper, or murderer. I never will be. So he does not. I never will be, so he does not get to be forgiven. I am going to present to you in the future a young man that already has plans for designing this city. He already has micro plans. He's got all these plans in place, and I think when he goes to UNR instead, TMCC, that he will flourish. So we'll, we'll do that. We do have standards. I like the fact that you keep standards. I contacted one of the first internal audit managers I ever met, because we want to talk about 501(c)(3) and all that kind of stuff. Well, what I will tell you is, from a political standpoint, I don't want people like Christopher Daher to be elected. Why? Because he falsely accused a student, and then when he was faced with the facts, he did nothing about it. So I'm not going to support him or anybody else that supports him. It's minor. Angela Taylor, have nothing against her, except for the fact she called herself my Christ, uh, sister in Christ, but she doesn't follow the documentation or the manual. Same with Christopher Daher. He was supposed to be my brother. He didn't follow the documentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hawa Ahmad, followed by Marcy Cooper-Smith.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hawa Ahmad, for the record. So I am the Chair of the Washoe County Senior Advisory Board. So I wanted to come in front of you and thank you all for your budget being passed last week. We're really excited about the things that we'll be able to fund in senior services. But one of the reasons why I did want to attend today is to thank you all and to really encourage you to pass the consent agenda items, seven each, one. So over, gosh, I joined the Washoe County Senior Advisory Board during the COVID pandemic and somehow became Chair. But when I became Chair, one of the things that was really brought to my attention is the fact that we were the only entity in northern Nevada that didn't become an AARP, Certified Age Friendly Community. And by doing so, we are making the commitment that we are going to be putting our senior services first. And we have to, because our seniors are currently, depending on where you are in our county, really faced with a lot of hardships. We know that the Great Recession was very hard on our seniors and our youth budgets and everyone on this commi, like commission, but we know that we also have a lot more money now than we've had in years prior. So we are very, very excited to have this agenda item move forward. It's, I do have some people in the audience here that can answer any questions if you guys choose to pull the item for discussion. But a special thanks goes to Commissioner Jung for putting that resolution forward, and just for all of you for considering it, and of course, to my Senior Advisory Board, the City of Reno Senior Advisory Board, and the City of Sparks Senior Advisory Board, and of course, Donna Clontz, because without them, we wouldn't even be in this spot today. So thank you again, and if you have any questions, we'll answer them during that time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Marcy Cooper-Smith, followed by Roger Edwards.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, County Manager. My name is Marcy Cooper-Smith, and as you can see, I'm wearing my ARP mask today because I'm here as an ARP volunteer, and I'm here on behalf of ARP to ask that you please consider Washoe County joining both the cities of Sparks and the city of Reno and becoming an age-friendly, livable community. The reason being is, with these communities, they will help everybody who lives in them. They allow for walkable streets, and most important, they give you access to key services, which we know a lot of our seniors need. So I'm hoping that you will consider joining the Age Friendly Community Network, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Roger Edwards, followed by Nicholas St. John. And I do have a document to distribute for Mr. Edwards.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Well, good afternoon, Roger Edwards. A 50-year resident, just had an anniversary. Now please refer to the handout that I provided. This is my third appearance for the Golden Valley Property Owners, and my last on the subject. I'm going to turn it over to the attorneys from now on and let them take care of it. Please address that handout from the top line. Our homeowners pay over $13,000 a month for their water treatment, water injection program, and it's been shut down, as you can see, April of 2016. 13.5 a month comes out to $162,064 a year, and these are funds we've already paid in. And just since the shutdown in April of 2016, the Golden Valley Property Owners have paid in $972,385. And even if the subject was put on the agenda now, it'd take a month or two to get there, which means we'd be over a million dollars that the county, that the county residents in Golden Valley have paid in to a water recharge program that's been shut down since Please read the other part to yourself, but I just want to recommend you think about the fact of Incline Village Tax Assessment Group. This is exactly what we've got going on right now in Golden Valley. Six years it's been shut down. Went to a meeting last night with Duane Smith, and he gave us about an hour's worth of blah, 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 with charts and graphs and eight-by-ten glossies, but he still hasn't shut down the assessment part of our recharge program. We have our own water rights. We bought our own this, we bought our own that. We put money aside, we put $700,000 in the bank. We can afford to pay somebody's salary while they work out the details of it, but the assessment part of this program has to be shut down yesterday. I'll go before a judge and I say, we're still paying $14,000 a month for a program that's been shut down six years ago. What do you think he's going to say? Thank you.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Tom Daley.
Welcome, Mr. St. John.
Good morning. For the record, Nicholas St. John. I've been before you guys a number of times for some issues with, that I found with provisional voting ballots. I turned in documentation before, where we found 2,950 provisional voting ballots that were cast in Cold Springs Middle School on November 3rd. If you're not in, if you're not really good at math, that's somewhere between three and eight people per minute that has to go through that middle school to do provisional voting ballots. If I can have, have the overhead. I've obtained the polling books, and I was in, I was told that for someone to do, that someone would be doing the ability to take in the polling books, and when someone comes in to register, they would then turn around and that would go into the polling books, and then it would get translated to the registry, the voter registrar. What you'll see here is a circle of where Jesse Gregg, who we have an affidavit from, who voted provisionally, did not show up on their polling books. There is a serious problem with this system. I was told by Heather Carmen a little bit ago that there was a problem with the polling books, and they only made about 2,900 errors accounting people from all kinds of polling stations that were accredited to Cold Springs Middle School. This is another set of two people who we have affidavits from, who did vote in Cold Springs, provisionally voting, same-day registration. They're not on this list either. There were 688 people who voted in Cold Springs, and that, these guys did not show up on there. So I'm asking the commission to open an investigation into the problems that we have shown there is. I would also like to ask each one of the board members where you stand on whether there was significant voter fraud in the 2020 election. That should only take a few seconds. I know you guys can respond, because this is not deliberation. Deliberation is when you have a discussion followed by an action. I'm not asking for an action, I'm just asking for where you guys stand, each one of you, on this. All right. In closing, the other thing I want to do is, I want to demand that you get rid of the illegal search and seizure out in front with the, with the metal detector. There is no cause, there is no probable cause, there are no warrants, and there is, and it's unreasonable searching when we just come into the chambers, and this is the only place that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Daley, followed by Donna Clontz.
Thank you.
Mr. Daley, welcome.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the record, Tom Daley from the estates of Mount Rose. As a matter of full disclosure, a candidate for Nevada's Assembly District 26, I'd ask that my comments be added into the record. Following up on Mr. Fink's presentation, I'm a little astounded that the issue of Mount Rose Highway Safety did not come up in his presentation. The number of accidents, injuries, and fatalities on this four-mile stretch from Wedge Parkway to Douglas Fir is unique and probably unprecedented in the county. There's not a, week goes by that NDOT doesn't give us some information that something's changing. They give us a time, but they don't tell us what's changing. My crystal ball is in the shop this week, so I can't divine what NDOT is doing. Signs go up, signs go down, lights get changed in timing, traffic, traffic signals turned off now get turned on. People don't know what's going on, and they have a right to know. It is a matter of county streets intersecting a state highway. So if you cross Thomas Creek Road at Mount Rose Highway, you're not crossing a state road, you're crossing a county street. Where's the pedestrian warning signals? Where's the striping? Where's the lighting? It's deficient. We have enough deaths at that intersection alone to warrant an immediate action by the Community Services Department. I don't know how they're prioritizing their projects, but it seems to me that deaths and injuries would push those projects to the top of the heap. It is a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Donna Clontz, followed by Pam Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, County Commission and Mr. City Manager. My name's Donna Clontz, and I have been active with the Washoe County Senior Advisory Board for, gosh, eight years plus now as an advisor. We've been involved here in our county for about five or six years, looking at this age-friendly process that was started by the World Health Organization as they looked at the fact that the world is growing older day by day by day, and they wanted to come up with ways for folks to do that aging in a way that would be healthy, that would make lives better. And in the research that they did, they came up with a lot of different ways that a community can actually do that. And so in 2012, AARP in the US became the agency that started looking at that and became the, the group that our country can work with to do the things that, that it takes to become an age-friendly community. We really appreciate that it is on the consent agenda today. We want to thank Commissioner Kitty Jung for being the lead on that, but all of you, I know, have been listening to me and to others talk about ways we can make our seniors a lot healthier and happier here in our community for, for years, and that it's, it's high on your list of things that you'd like to accomplish as well. The mission up on the wall here, Washoe County's mission, working together regionally to provide and sustain the safe, secure, and healthy community is exactly what this program will do for us. It gives us a framework, it's free from AARP, it gives us a way for our Senior Advisory Board to use tested ways to come up with what our community really wants to do. And we've got a ready-made survey that will be put out to everybody here in the community to give our, give their feedback. So whatever is created is going to be coming from those folks who are 60 and over here in our own community about the things they think that we could do to make their lives better. So we, we appreciate again that you're considering it on, on the agenda today, and our Senior Advisory Board is really looking forward to doing the work on it and keeping you posted. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Pam Roberts, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pam Roberts. I am Vice Chair of the Senior Advisory Board, and I'm here to ask for your support and vote in favor of Resolution R. 22-58. I would like to point out a couple things. First of all, you noticed that there's no fiscal note. You'll not have to hire any new staff, and that the Senior Advisory Board voted unanimously to take on this project. We do it, we were appointed by this board, this commission, and we unanimously, unanimously said, we want to make this happen in our county. I think we need to put our hats, take our hats off to people like, excuse me, Donna Clontz, who's an advisory member who has been very active in helping this board. I also want to point out that the board isn't all of people like myself, who are 60 years of age and older. The Chair of our board is Hawa Ahmad, who you saw earlier. She's a young person, I believe she's right around 30, if I can tell tales. We also have Ethan Hovest, who's also quite a few years under 60, and I think this is an example of where our community and the whole age-friendly living community is about not just helping people who are 60 years of older, and years of age and older, but people of all ages. And this particular board has people who are younger and older on the board, and we're all working together to make this a better community. So I hope you will support this resolution. I also would like to acknowledge Washoe County staff members, Steve McBride and Abby Wilrich. These are two amazing people that our county has that's helping to make this community better for seniors. We have some excellent administrative staff with Ryan Crane and Sandra Vasquez. I've worked in government jobs for most of my career, and I've had the opportunity to work with people who are really passionate and committed, and these people are definitely some of those people, and I really appreciate working with them, and I hope, again, the commission will pass Resolution R. 22-58. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Wayne Gordon.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning, Janet Butcher. For the, for the record, please enter my comments into the records. I apologize, Jen, I forgot to mark that I have a overhead.
Oh, it's on.
It's ready.
Go ahead and put it, put it in, right, it's on, it's on, Jen. There you go.
How can we trust the postal service? May 28th is upon us. We're going to have all these mail-in ballots going out. I had a second-day piece of mail sent to me from San Diego, California. Two days, it arrived at the Reno Distribution Center. And it died, it noticed, it notified me that it would be late. It wouldn't get there on the second day. I waited. Three days, four days later, it came up, and it was going to be delivered to the address in Honolulu, Hawaii. So there you have it. Reno Distribution Center sent it to Hawaii. Now I have been informed that there have been multiple mail-in ballots sent to the same address, to the same people. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention, because we can't trust the mail-in ballots. I would like to ask if you have seen the documentary, 2,000 Mules? I asked a couple of the people that were running for commission if they had seen it, and they asked me what it was about, and when I told them, it was about how they could track people going around dropping off the, the same cell phone, dropping off multiple ballots. They said, oh, I don't want to see that. We don't want to hear the truth. So then the next thing I want to talk about is, also too, I have been informed that there are some training deficiencies in the poll workers. That there have been many, many complaints about how the training has gone. And one of them, this is hearsay from me, because I didn't get called to be a poll worker, but one of them, one person I would trust, who has actually been trained in training people. And do we have enough poll workers? And where do we stand on ensuring that the date and timestamps for polling locations? And I want to honor the fallen soldiers, since this weekend is Memorial Day, especially my uncle. And where do we stand on ensuring that the date and timestamps for pulling locations? And I want to honor the fallen soldiers since this weekend is Memorial Day, especially my uncle, who perished in 1944 in the South Seas.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wayne Gordon, followed by Lilia Grahada.
Hello, Mr. Gordon. Good morning. My name's Wayne Gordon. I'm a resident of Reno, excuse me, Reno, Nevada. I would like my comments entered into the record. First of all, right now, we have a significant problem with gas prices. Washoe County is already the most expensive gas I'm aware of, at least in northern Nevada. And then, I believe it's July 1st, another gas in-tax increase is scheduled to go into being. I would recommend that you have a session and get rid of it. We're already paying too much. And I would say that part of our problem is things like, "I gave you the money for this. You guys are not giving money away. You may be allocating our money, but you're not giving our money away. Use it carefully. At least pretend that you're going to take care of it." Another thing I want to talk about is the number-one cause of death, one of the number-one causes of death currently, is fentanyl. Fentanyl is a very dangerous drug. It's legal for certain things when prescribed, but it's killing people on our streets, especially 20, 30-year-old people and homeless and so forth because it's so cheap. It's supposedly being manufactured in China, brought to South America, and then being smuggled into the United States and distributed over the southern border. I would like to encourage you to write Homeland Security and ask them to start controlling our borders and get that under control. Start saving lives. And the last thing is, you've already heard several presentations from others about our election. We came every week, almost. And you chose to do nothing when you were asked to. And it's time you did something. I would suggest, ask, that you form a commission with at least a couple of members of the commissioners, along with people who you know and have seen provided. And start looking into this because 2,000 mules is a very carefully documented thing, along with everything else.
Lilia Grahada.
Welcome.
Hi. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lilia Grahada, and I am representing Urban Roots today. So I wanted to thank you all very much for considering the proposal to fund us to build a teaching garden on our garden space. And I also wanted to speak a little bit about my role at Urban Roots and explain what the funding will go to. So I'm a seat-to-table educator at Urban Roots. So I work directly with the community, providing bilingual support for people to get interested in garden education. So I work with kids and older adults as well, in both English and Spanish in my job, just teaching STEM education and getting people interested in nutrition education and overall community health. So the funding that's being proposed will go towards our engineering costs to actually bring a restroom and kitchen onto our teaching farm. And that will just be a great addition to our cause just so that we can increase accessibility to nutrition education to all community members. And also, I mean, just speaking from someone who works at the farm, it would be nice to have a bathroom on the farm. So thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
I have nobody else signed in.
Okay. All right, we will close public comment. We will bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that now takes us, let me get to the right page. Go ahead.
Okay. Commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of items. The first is to point out that on the agenda today, items 10 through 14, you will notice we have begun to reach agreements with our employee associations. And this is the first batch that have been ratified. There are more to come. I want to thank the employee associations for working with us in good faith to get these agreements extended. I also want to thank our Director of HR, Patricia Hurley, for her efforts in negotiations. The second item that I'd like to speak to, Mr. Chair, is that early voting begins on Saturday. So you may have, the public may have received mail-in ballots already in your mailbox unless you have chosen to opt out through the Secretary of State or Secretary of State's website. If you have not received this by tomorrow, you need to reach out to the Registrar's Voters Office so they can take the appropriate actions. If you receive a ballot for someone else that does not live at your address, as we've said before, the best thing to do is simply write "not at this address" on the envelope. Put it in the mail. It'll be returned to the Registrar's Voters. Fastest way to help us clean those items up. Mail-in ballots indicate that you can, the ballots indicate that you can peel and seal envelopes. However, there has been an issue with the vendor not do the tape, s, and lick the envelope and seal it, or you can lose stick, or you can use clear that you not use opaque tape potentially block the, that you're on the other side of the flap. As I said, it begins, say, May 20th through Friday, 10th, at vote centers across the county. You may exit to visit one rather than a ballot towards your in your mail to you to in person. You may also turn in your fill-up mail-in ballot person is voting mailing, but end of vote fraud. Do that. Election Day begins on, if you're not already registered. And General Election Day is June 14th at over 2,000 vote centers throughout the county. Mr. Chair, that includes my
Okay. Mr. Manager. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, one thing and one thing only. I, because of Mr. Gordon's testimony, I do want to bring back to this board, if possible, Mr. Chairman, at your discretion, of course, the way in which we can look at fentanyl overdoses as fentanyl poisonings and get law enforcement involved. Because what is happening because of, not only is it cheaper and less is necessary in fentanyl, drug dealers are putting it in everything, including off-market ganja cannabis. And in those instances, these are not ODs. These are active poisoning. And the reason why they put the fentanyl, the high-level opioid, must have a and care is because, I mean, they're rolling the dice. Are they either going to kill their customers or, most importantly, get them highly addicted to the opioid that they didn't even know they were ingesting? So I would like the sheriff and the medical examiner and all of those teams that work together to put this in the criminal realm now instead of making it look like a stigma or that's what a drug addict gets. Those type of beliefs anymore do not fit with what we're experiencing in the data, and that is poisoning of people, not giving them a bad off-market drug on accident. It is legitimate poisoning and people unsuspecting getting a hold of this and dying. And I also would like the medical examiner to work with the other partners around town here to provide to people who self-select, obviously, that they would purchase illegal drugs on the street, which we know there's tons of them. We get those all the time. And instead, we provide them with free testing strips as a counteraction to people who are using illicit substance so that they are not being, and I don't even say it's an accidental poison, purposely poisoned by drug dealers in our community. So I like to see that sooner than rather on the agenda as well. And what I mean by sooner is latter, once you've consolidated some data and some information, I'm sure this is not the only list of things to do for the medical examiner or any other staff that's touched by this. But I would like to be the leading county in the country that turns around and prosecutes people for poisoning our citizens who are unsuspecting. While they might be doing something you don't agree with morally, they don't deserve to die. It was not their intent to die. And in many ways, you could say, "Well, that's not the dealer's intent." But the dealer is ultimately responsible for putting something in a substance that the purchaser did not in any way bargain for. So I would like to see where the sheriff stands on that, too, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Manager, in terms of focusing on going after the people who are poisoning and killing our constituents and our citizens for no fault of their own and getting out of the, "Well, if they just were better people and went to church more," or whatever the prescription is. I'd rather criminalize this now and go after the dealer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is potentially possession of fentanyl could be attempted murder?
No.
Well, if you have possession of it, that means that you're going to, somebody's going to use it. So that's how I connected. Okay. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, in reply to all the folks that have come here pleading for a fair election, I just want to make sure that you understand that it is our responsibility to the people of Washoe County to provide that, to provide a safe, fair, transparent, and honest election. And I pray that that's what we have. I'd like to request also that the number for the Registrar's Office for people that haven't gotten their ballots yet or by tomorrow, maybe we could put that number out here at this meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay. Vice Chair Lucy, I have you signed in next. I've got Commissioner Hill, but I don't think Commissioner Hill is, she, I don't think she wants to. Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in, but did you want to speak? Okay. Vice Chair Lucy, go ahead.
Just Commissioner, no Vice Chair. But I appreciate it.
Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to everybody this morning. Lots of public comment this morning that I want to take some time to respond to. Coming off of last week, most of us, all of us, every commissioner on this board sits on a number of regional boards. And we are coming out of, or completing, our budget presentations. And so those budgets could be submitted to the state in a timely fashion prior to the end of the fiscal year. And one of the budgets that is constantly brought up, and I think this morning was extremely relevant, was the discussion about traffic and traffic calming and that through RTC, from the fuel tax to safety calming issues through a number of different issues. One thing I want to bring up first and foremost, Mr. Chair, is I'd like to ask staff that we continue to move forward. And we brought this up at the RTC Board Meeting about a number of roads that are state roads in and around through Washoe County. Currently, there is eight separate roads, just within the Trucky Meadows, that are still identified as state highways. From Pyramid Highway, Sun Valley, Sun Valley Road is 443. That's a state road. Glendale, which 648. McCarran, the McCarran Loop is identified as State Route 659. Kitskey Lane is State Route 667. And then Holcomb Ranch Lane, which is 671. And then the major ones, which are obviously Mount Rose Highway, which is State Route 431. And then Virginia, from Toll Road up to Virginia City, is State Route 341, not including State Route 28 around the lake. These roads, some of these roads, obviously, are in the middle of Sparks and Reno and will be very difficult to transfer those, that ownership back over to the counties or the municipalities. However, Holcomb Ranch Lane is one of those individual roads that still has portions of it on Lakeside, Huffaker, and Holcomb Ranch that are not serviced by, are not serviced in its quality by NDOT and should be transferred over to the county for our maintenance and our improvement. And those roads should be brought up to standards because we talk about safety and trying to continue to build that. And it's very difficult when you have these competing jurisdictions. And one of the issues is that when we talk about budgets, RTC's budget is listed here in our 2021 annual report. RTC did a lot of great work in that gas, the fuel tax goes to a number of initiatives between improving roads and arterials in and around our community. However, those budgets are, it's a different budget than the other budgets for the boards that we sit on. A majority of the budgets that we sit on are what I would call service budgets, not capital budgets. Here at the county, we have 25 and 100 employees. And our job at the county is to provide service to the community from our 24 different departments and make sure that those departments run and the staff are available for community members at all times. Whereas with RTC, there's only 67 employees that work at RTC, and a majority of that budget goes to capital improvement projects and has been outlined and secured by gas tax to build roads and continue to maintain the roads and arterials and expand through our community. While I may find some opposition or response that we don't do as good of a job in maintaining our roads here in Washoe County, I would disagree. I would think that a majority of our roads, to our ability, are better than what you would find throughout the state of Nevada and other states, and California, for that matter. And when you have a service budget and it's obligated to do capital improvement projects, it's very difficult to continue to shift around. That doesn't mean you shouldn't prioritize and continue to improve those roads. But it makes it very difficult when you have a budget and you have competing municipalities and competing jurisdictions about who does what. And so that really is something that I want to continue to move forward on and work towards identifying those needs so that we can, there's always one place for somebody to go to. I think that's what we've always attempted to be here at the county, is that one-stop-shop for those types of infrastructure services. And when we talk about that, Commissioner Jung brought it up with Sun Valley. You know, the challenges that we have with speeding and the arterials there. And 641, I mean, 671 around Holcomb Ranch is challenged. Pyramid Way, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hartung has fought that tirelessly to get those improvements just from traffic calming and whatnot. Mr. Daley brought up the safety concerns on 431. And we ask and ask and ask and continue to advocate, yet NDOT still will not and has not responded very quickly or with any kind of diligence to make those improvements, whether that's expansion of the Butch Cassidy Road to improve on different ways for community access and different things of that nature. And it comes back to the statement I said earlier is that with roads and the development across this county, as we continue to see the growth within our county, we need to continue to think about how we are going to approach that. Also, Mr. Manager, Vice Chair Hill and myself met with staff up at the lake on State Route 28 and through 431. They're doing the improvements along that road and paving. One of the issues is lighting that they said lighting could be included. This was from Director Swallow herself during the This was from Director Swallow herself during, and I said, well, they would not add the addition of safety lighting along the corridor from the state line to where the post office is in the Crystal Bay area. And they said that we could reach out to them and that they would make those improvements. So if that we could follow up with Director Swallow on that. And also that there is, the draft study is out for the Mount Rose Safety Corridor Study. I have, I did receive a copy of that last week, but I have yet to go through that in its entirety. But they are proposing roundabouts, three roundabouts on Mount Rose Highway. And I don't know if those are necessarily exactly what we want, but they're something. And it just seems like this process is dragging on. So I would ask that we move on with that. Also, as we talk about gas tax, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna add, Chairman, if you don't mind, ask if we can have legal, they have provided us, at least the commissioners, kind of an outline of what we can, under our purview, have the ability to do as it pertains to the gas tax and its increase coming in July. And if we have any availability at this level to impose that. Now, RTC 5 was passed in 2010 by a vote of the people, which makes it very difficult for a county commission to go back, especially through NRS, through 278, I believe it's under, that we can go and make those adjustments. But if you can give us a little bit, I'm sorry, NRS 373 is, is the code in which that fall, is the law in which that falls under, or the statute in which that falls under 373. And I'm gonna turn to Mr. Edwards, and if he could give us a little bit of insight on that, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. And talk to us, because we had the same conversation, Mr. Edwards, without, without any deliberation here, we had the same conversation at RTC and legal reference bond impairment, the potential for bond impairment, so.
Correct. Real quick, and I'm not gonna get really in-depth on this, but I will give you sort of the overview. This is also in consultation with the county's bond council, so it's not just, you know, sort of our take on it, it's bond council's take as well, generally speaking. And you're correct about the word impairment. And what it is really is a constitutional protection against impairment of contract. And so when, when bondholders make decisions about whether to buy the bonds, they factor in the strength of the revenue stream that supports the repayment of those bonds. And all those kinds of things are part of the calculus that results in purchase price and things like interest rates and bond ratings and all those types of things get factored into those equations. Part of the calculus with respect to the RTC bonds in the, to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars that are outstanding, is the indexing, the tax itself plus the indexing and future increases that happen on a formulaic basis. So to simply take action to reverse that or cap it or eliminate it, you know, those increases would, in effect, amount to tinkering with the revenue stream or reducing the revenue stream that went into the valuation of those bonds when they were sold on the market. And so the problem with that is you're impairing the contractual rights of those, of those bondholders. So that is something that can't be done as a, a black and white matter. What, what could potentially be done is the county could pay off the, the, the bonds, but that's a massive outlay for the county to try and consider. Or find a replacement revenue stream that would simply, in effect, be robbing Peter to pay Paul. So you'd be, end up, in effect, enacting another tax somewhere else to replace the lost revenue stream that is part of the bond calculus. I know this is kind of complex, and that's why the county has bond council, and I've worked with them closely on this and other matters. And they do a great job with this kind of stuff. But what it comes down to is the bondholders are contractual creditors, and to impair their contractual rights to have the bonds that they purchase, which are secured by particular revenue streams, including indexed future increases, is or would be an impairment of contract. And so you can't simply breeze in and do that. So it's not as simple as it sounds. There are other issues that go into this entire equation, but I think that's enough for today in terms of an explanation.
So Chairman, if I may, based upon Mr. Edwards' very eloquent relay of information in regards to statute, NRS 373, when you say rob Peter to pay Paul, when we, that money would come somewhere else. And I can tell you, right now, the outstanding bond numbers are around $373 million for road improvements within Washoe County as a whole. And it has been challenging. So one way or another, if we were to pay those off, you're going to have to find that money somewhere else. And we don't have that financial capability at the, at the county to pay off $373 million worth of bond or without putting it somewhere else, whether that be sales tax or something else to secure that revenue. So it's, it's a limiting factor within that, whether you, however you look at it. And so I just want to make sure that they understand, yes, it's challenging to get five, pay for, pay $5 a gallon at the pump, but that is a national, global national issue that is something that the, the voters of Washoe County put into effect over 12 years ago. And to, to sit and say, we can just change that based upon global markets, it's very difficult to do that. And this does fluctuate, it will continue to go forward. So I just want to point that out, and thank you, Mr. Edwards, for bringing that forward. Also, we've had some wonderful meetings with, I want to know where we are with discussions on EMS and, and fire and dispatch. Mr. Manager, if we can follow up, I know we had meetings back in, at the end of April, 1st of May to discuss that. And I want, we were gonna have a kind of a follow-up and roundtable with that and see where we could potentially move that forward. So hopefully looking to sit with you and staff and bring that back for possible consideration here at the, the county commissioners for further discussion about how we move forward effectively with the cities and all the EMS partners to address the growing concerns within our communities about boundary drops, different things of that nature, so that we can address that going forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lucy. And I would also just add to, you know, the, the gas tax comments that, that Mr. Edwards made. Recall that at RTC, our CFO and our legal apprised us that the, the indexing in this go-round would be, and it's not that it's insignificant, but it would be less than two cents a gallon. It's 1.8 cents, if memory serves me correctly. Yeah. So it's, it's just a, it's an indexing that, that I believe the voters also approved. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a creative idea, if you're, if there's any appetite for this board to take, and you might get around the gas tax by going back to your RTC board and asking them to issue checks to people who use gas in this community. And I know you hate it, fifth-generation native Nevadan, but I'm gonna tell you something. In California, they have a surplus and everybody's getting a check. And this is their way that they're going around the gas going up. So if RTC, something you really could look at. And you could even do it like a lottery almost, where people go, you know, when you go to fill up your tank, if you have some sort of random thing, there's gotta be a way to get around this, if this is what you really want to do. One thing I do want the public to be aware of, unless you work in the truck, your gas, this gas, how much to, do your own math at home, how much you pay a month for gas. Like for my house, and listen, I'm not an elitist, I'm not a one percenter, I'm solidly with you, it's like $50 more a year. So, and I promise you, you spend more than that on your, well, unless you have a gas guzzler, and then, I mean, that's a whole other issue. But I'm telling you, it is not that big of a, it just feels like it. I don't like it either when it's $70 to fill up my car. That's a pair of shoes, as far as I'm concerned. So, but what I'm saying is, in the scope of the universe, it's not that big. But if RTC wanted to do something for hearts and minds and to make people feel better about this inflation, that's where they could do it. Stop coming and asking us to do it. I'm not putting a bond up. I'm not going to now not provide pothole cleanups for you or having people being off in the, into public space and using it as a camping site for 30 days at a time so that I can service this bond. But if you really wanted to get creative, look at a rebate through RTC. They can control their own destiny. And I've always said, RTC has more money than anybody in this community. So don't look at me, not while I'm here. I'm not doing anything with Washoe County. But if you want to give your people a $50 check or whatever it comes out to, RTC should issue it. They have the fiscal responsibility and the money in the bank. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, that leaves me. Let me tell you what, what I did this weekend, because I think it's, I think it's important. I attended the donor remembrance luncheon for the Donate Life group, where families set up tables for their loved ones and remembered their loved ones who donated their organs when they passed. And this was a, this was a very touching event because, I mean, you had a room full of, of families, and most, most of the donors were donors on their own. They had their licenses checked to be donors, and, and yet the family could have intervened but did not. And it, and, I mean, it was, it was just a very, very touching event to, to get a chance to have conversations with these folks and hear the stories about their loved ones and, and, and to hear the stories about the people that they saved. Because, you know, a single organ donor can save many, many people. It's, it's truly a life-giving gift. So I wanted to, to thank the Nevada Donor Network for that program. It was very worthwhile. I also wanted to thank, Ms. Butcher, I'm gonna thank you directly for mentioning Memorial Day. I, too, had an uncle who served in the South Pacific. He was a B-25 pilot, highly decorated. He came home, but he was never the same. And I didn't, I, of course, didn't know him fully until the 60s, but he was an amazing man. My father also served in World War II. He was a bombardier. I don't think he was ever the same. So, you know, thank you to all the veterans out there who have served in any war, whether it was, I know we still have some World War II vets. My stepdad was a Korea vet. And my, my brother-in-law was Desert Storm, and other brother-in-law was, I, I believe he might have been in Vietnam. So, thank you. Thank you so much for all you have given our country. Anyone else? Did I shake anything loose? And I, I want to thank staff for coming out on the, the road issues. We have lots more work to do on that, so thank you for that update. And I look forward to making a difference in some of these communities.
Chairman, one other thing I would, you did shake something loose for me. I appreciate it, sir. One of the things that constituents have reached out to me about, too, is some of the, the large haul trucks, going back to the increase in development we're seeing around here. Some of the large haul trucks are utilized, a lot of close aggregate pits, both in the south part of the county and the northern part of the county, and are dragging those, dragging the trucks to bring dirt and rock and whatnot throughout the community to different construction zones. There is a, there is a regulation for those individuals to cover those loads of dry, of dry dirt or, or rock so that that doesn't spread while they're traveling down either the highways or our, our local arterial's. However, there has been a significant amount of those individuals because either they're moving too fast or, you know, work is going too, too quickly, that that sometimes, sometimes that step gets missed. And, and if there's a way that we can reach out to those providers, those hauling companies, those different things, to make sure that that is being adhered to, because this morning I was driving down behind a 395, behind a triple, pulling dirt and rock, and there was dust and dirt and rocks falling out of the, out of both of their bays. And it's something that we definitely need to address going forward, and if, if staff can look into that for us, that would be great. I have had a number of constituents out in the Double Diamond and Demone Ranch area share concerns with me for specifically some of the pits down there and hauling off of Western Skies and Toll Road area with those concerns about having loose dirt on the roads and whatnot. So something, if we could have staff look into that, that'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, Commissioners, I'm going to close item number six, and that takes us now, Mr. Manager, to our consent agenda, item number seven.
Item number seven, Mr. Chair, just before you do that, to answer Commissioner Herman's question, if folks do not receive a ballot, they can dial 311.
Well, and
Or there is a direct number, 328-3670, but prefer you dial 311, it's easier for us to track how, how prevalent that is and where it's coming from, so.
Mr. Manager, maybe we can put that, and thank you, before I close, item number six, maybe we can put that right on the homepage, on our landing page of the county, that if you have not received your ballot.
We will do that, sir.
Okay, very good. Excellent.
So moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. Chair, I have no changes.
Commissioners, would anyone like any information in item number seven? And by the way, just for the record, my hair is actually jet-black and I am dying it gray, but I do have an AARP card.
Silver fox looks good. Silver fox looks good on you.
And, but anyways, I'm very supportive of, of AARP. I've had one for a while.
Mr. Chairman, can I point out a few things in the consent agenda, too, that I think are of note, that I'd like to point out? We are having the, we're going to, we've already acknowledged the retirement of Deputy Chief Alex Kuklis from TMFRPD, and he will be moving on this July to spend more time with his family and enjoy his, his young children after a long year, long, many years of service to our community. And with the promotion of Chief, Division Chief Chris Kettering, he will be the new Deputy Fire Chief for Trucky Meadows Fire Protection District. And Chief Kettering will now complete and continue to serve on, in his capacity, as Deputy Chief on the E911 as we know it, or the 911 Emergency Response Advisory Committee that looks to all of the funding for EMS in this area and continues, that will come, and all those decisions do come back to this board for ultimate approval. But we do wish Mr. Kuklis well on his retirement, and also we look forward to Deputy Chief Kettering and his capacity to continue to lead us with those emergency response funds.
Thank you, Mr. Lucy. Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you. Before we take the consent agenda vote, I would like to point out item 7E2, 7-Echo 2. Our Chair, Vaughn Hartung, is releasing special district funds in the amount of $15,000, broken down as thusly: $5,000 to Urban Roots, which will help them connect community members to the food they eat through garden-based education. And also, it's bilingual, so I super appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And the, I also appreciate your support for Urban Roots because of, as we know, growing up, we're a little older, and I do have white, too, around here. The connection to the soil and the, the fruits and vegetables that you can grow is a lot missing in a modern society. So I believe that the most healthy way that you can teach human beings how to eat is to teach them how to grow their food. And you know, with kids, it's the most exciting, you finally, first time you get them to eat a bean, for instance, right off the vine. So I really appreciate your support there. And then you also are granting $10,000 to the James D. Hoff Peace Officer Memorial, which helps with the maintenance and the, of the memorial site, which features all the names of fallen officers from the state that have occurred here. And it also enshrines them, and it allows them to have their annual memorial ceremonies, which if you've never been to one, you missed it, it was a couple of weeks ago, but next year, they do it every year at the City of Reno's Rose Garden. And it is beautiful and very sad. And it is beautiful and very sad. It's a very sad, somber event, much like Memorial Day events are. But I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your generosity in this community, not only with your commissioned district funds, but just your activism. You're all over the place. You're on the spectrum in a good way. And I really appreciate that about you. And you're just so very generous with the people that approach you. I actually tell them to approach you first before they approach me because you're much nicer with opening up the wallet and writing the check. So, sorry if you're getting those, but I do appreciate that. And then finally, as was mentioned in our public comment by the illustrious Chair Hava Ahmed for the Senior Advisory Board, as well as Donna Clontz and the rest of the gang that was here, and it looks like they're off to do other things. I bring up to you all the time about my Senior Services Advisory Board. This is the most active board in all of Washoe County. And listen, they've been working on this tirelessly for years and years and years. And finally, we are going to be designated as an age-friendly community. And if you don't think that means anything, again, look at the white hair up here, including mine, and being age-friendly is essential. And I think it's important that Ms. Rogers had mentioned, who's the Vice Chair. If you look at the ages of our Senior Advisory Board, there are young and seniors on there. And I think it is a testament to the young people that are around here how much the culture is really changing in terms of honoring our elders. I don't remember this being this way even 15 years ago. It was almost as if seniors were left to their own devices and in many ways, treated as a nuisance, rather than the great wealth of knowledge and life and the archiving that they've done just by living life, right? There is much that you gain just by scraping yourself up year after year. And I am so proud of this board. And they also are the command and control for the Older Americans Month, of which I was able to go down to the animal, canine rescue, now it's a cat rescue too, for the most unhousable animals from all over the country who are brought in for years of rehabilitation because of issues that they have, because of human beings not doing a good job at taking care of them. And so, Senior Services goes far and wide. That was in Commissioner Lucy's district. If anybody is ever interested in looking at the Canine Rehab Center, I strongly recommend. Now, it's going to be nothing like I expected, which when the lady was talking the whole time, I'm like, "Come on, let's see the dogs." That's not those kind of dogs, you know, just to get to run in and frolic with them because they have special needs. But, you know, it sure makes me tie the two together when it comes to Older American Month and seniors and AARP. And then, another vulnerable population, which are the animals that other people can't care for. Senior Services Advisory Board is the one-stop shop to look out for all the vulnerable. They just happen to be called Senior Services. So, I want to thank the Chair, I want to thank the Vice Chair, I want to thank Donna Clontz. I'm going to miss names here, which is terrible. The staff, they're phenomenal. And again, if you're looking to get involved and actually want to do something, I encourage all of you to attend the Senior Services Advisory Board. I would also like to say that if it wasn't for Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Board, there would be no Spark City Advisory Board. Because it was somebody that termed off of ours that went and started at Spark. So, now we have all three entities working together to improve the lives of seniors and homeless pets. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
With that, I make...
Okay, all right. So, we have discussed the consent agenda. Thank you for that. I do have a motion. Can I get a second and then we'll ask for public comment? So, I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on our consent agenda, item number seven?
Mr. Chairman, I do have an email that was submitted by Cindy Kimball for item 7H1.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. That now takes us to our regular agenda items. Commissioner Lucy, do you have by chance a suggested block vote?
I do, sir. This afternoon, I would recommend in block, under our general business, that we place items eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 into block. And I want to thank all those, as the manager pointed out earlier. I want to thank all the associations that worked with us diligently to move forward with negotiations on the ongoing contracts and all the staff and time that was put into that, especially our human resources staff and our DA staff that worked on those agreements. They are difficult to get through, but it takes sound minds and a lot of discussion and negotiations. And I want to thank all those individuals from those organizations that helped move those through. So, with that, I put those into a form of a motion, sir.
Okay, all right. Before I ask a second, Mr. Manager, would you read those items in? And then, we will ask for public comment, and I'll get my second, and we'll move on.
Okay, item number eight, recommendation to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $272,727. No county match in both revenue and expenses for FY22 National Environmental Health Association capacity building grant to build capacity for the Environmental Health Safety Food Safety Program, retroactive to February 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number nine is recommendation to approve the revised Pro-Tim Justice of the Peace Panel for the justice courts pursuant to NRS 4.032 and approve same to serve as a list of potential administrative enforcement code hearing officers pursuant to Washoe County Code 125.225. Item number 10 is a recommendation to approve the cost of living adjustments in base wage of 5% effective July 1st, 2022. FY22-23 estimated fiscal impact of $2,686,204 and 3.5% effective July 1st, 2023, which is FY23-24 estimated impact of $2,793,594 for unclassified management and non-represented confidential employees, district court employees, justice court employees, including justices of the peace, juvenile services employees in Truckee River Flood Management Authorities, Executive Director and General Counsel, and bilingual pay changes to non-represented confidential employees estimated fiscal impact of zero and standby pay changes for non-represented confidential employees excluding division directors at salary grade T and above, district court employees, justice courts employees excluding justices of the peace, and juvenile services employees as outlined in their department personnel manuals estimated fiscal impact of $26,296, estimated total fiscal impact of $5,506,94. Item number 11 is a recommendation to approve collective bargaining agreements with the Washoe County Alternative Sentencing Officers Association to the non-supervisory and supervisory bargaining units for the two-year period July 1st, 2022, including adjustment to pay grade structure for parity with Washoe County District Attorney's Investigator Association salaries and cost of living adjustments in base wages of 5% effective July 1st, 2022. FY23 estimated fiscal impact of $120,590 and 3.5% beginning July 1st, 2023. FY23-24 estimated impact of $135,805, including updated safety equipment allowance, shift differential, career incentive, instructor differential, post-pay, and approve same cost of living adjustments and updated safety equipment, career incentive and post-pay, and for the non-represented chief alternative sentencing officer, FY22-23 estimated fiscal impact $10,434 and FY23-24 estimated fiscal impact $13,289, estimated total fiscal impact of $280,118. Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve collective bargaining agreements with the Washoe County Nurses Association for the non-supervisory and supervisory bargaining units for the two-year period beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, including pay grade structure adjustments based on the critical labor market study conducted by Corn Ferry, estimated fiscal impact $53,791, cost of living adjustments in base wages of 5% effective July 1st, 2022. FY22-23 estimated fiscal impact $123,977 and 3.5% beginning July 1st, 2023. FY23-24 estimated fiscal impact of $128,316 and eight hours of personal leave credit effective July 2022 and 16 hours of personal leave credit in January of each of the calendar years 2023 and 2024, estimated fiscal impact of zero. An updated agreement language regarding salaries and personal leave, holidays, leaves of absence, career development, bilingual differential, deferred compensation, and duration of agreement, estimated fiscal impact $10,000. Total estimated fiscal impact for all fiscal years is $316,084. Item number 13 is a recommendation to approve collective bargaining agreement with the Washoe County Public Attorneys Association for a two-year period beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, and ratify same, including cost of living adjustments in base wage of 5% effective July 1st, 2022. FY22-23 estimated fiscal impact $822,486 and 3.5% beginning July 1st, 2023. FY23-24 estimated fiscal impact $851,273 and update agreement language regarding salaries, leave of absence, holidays, bail reform pay, parking allowance, career incentive pay, grievance procedures and term of agreement, estimated allowance, estimated fiscal impact of $186,325 and approve same for confidential attorneys. FY22-23 estimated fiscal impact of $186,171. FY23-24 estimated fiscal impact $193,282, total estimated fiscal impact of $2,239,537. Item number 14 is a recommendation to approve collective bargaining agreements with the Washoe County District Attorney Investor Investigator Association for the non-supervisory and supervisory bargaining units for a two-year period beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, including cost of living adjustments in base wages of 5% effective July 1st, 2022, plus a one-time-only lump sum payment of $2,000 for non-supervisory, $3,000 for supervisory, effective July 4th, 2022, paid on July 22nd, 2022, for employees covered under the CBA in effect at the time of the payment. FY23-22-23 estimated fiscal impact of $92,691 and cost of living adjustments in base wages of 3.5% beginning July 1st, 2023, plus a one-time-only lump sum of $2,000 for non-supervisory, $3,000 for supervisory, effective July 3rd, 2023, paid on July 21st, 2023, for employees covered under this CBA in effect at the time of payment. FY23-24 estimated fiscal impact of $95,164. Updated standby safety equipment and bilingual pay estimated total fiscal impact of $5,600 and updated agreement language regarding salaries, holidays, discipline and grievance and terms of agreement. And approve same salaries, $3,000 lump sum payment, standby pay, bilingual pay and holidays for the non-represented chief investigator estimated fiscal impact of $26,808 for all fiscal years, the total estimated fiscal impact of $220,263. Item number 15 is a recommendation to authorize with the purchasing and contracts manager to purchase eight Chevy Trailblazer all-wheel drive from Champion Chevrolet for use by Washoe County Human Services Agency Senior Services Homemaker Program in an amount not to exceed $185,000. Approve the transfer of the vehicle to the Human Services Agency fleet managed by Equipment Services and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate asset adjustments. Item 16 is a recommendation to approve the sole source purchasing of the ClearPass Full Body Security Screening System, from Adani Systems to screen juveniles for contraband and weapons as they are admitted to the secure detention section of Jan Evans Juvenile Justice Center. Item 17 is a recommendation to accept coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds allocation from the City of Sparks in the amount of $704,408 with a retroactive period from September 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, during which time all funds must be incurred and expended. Retroactively authorize the county manager to sign subaward document and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number 18 is a recommendation to approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds through the coronavirus state recovery fiscal recovery fund and coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund in a total amount of $2,902,258.66 and possible approval of recommended allocations of the funds and direction to the Comptroller's Office to make necessary net zero cross-fund and cross-functional budget appropriation transfers for the proposed projects as follows. Item number 26 is a Washoe County Sheriff's Office security upgrade for $2 million. Item 27 is a regional COVID-19 wastewater surveillance research of $504,258.66. Item 28, Wilburby D. May Museum assistance for recovery of lost revenue due to closure on account of the COVID pandemic, $200,000. Item 29 is a recruitment and retention incentive program, $150,000. Item 30 is a Washoe Wellness Center and onsite fitness facility for use by county employees in connection with work, $48,000. The proposed projects fall within the American Rescue Plan Act and the coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund and coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund eligible uses include a proposed implementation process and come with the extensive compliance and reporting requirements. Final allocations may vary from those proposed based on information developed during this item. Item 19 is a recommendation to approve the inter-local agreement for the sharing of costs for COVID-19 research and in accordance with NRS 244.1505, to approve the sub-grant of American Rescue Plan Act funds through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds to the City of Sparks in the amount not to exceed $504,258.66 for Washoe County's regional share of the research and monitoring of SARS-CoV-2 presence in wastewater and community prevalence monitoring due to the COVID-19 pandemic with a grant period effective September 1st, 2021 through December 30th, 2022. And if approved, authorize the county manager to sign the Washoe County sub-grant agreement between Washoe County and the City of Sparks and approve the resolution necessary for same. Item number 20 is a recommendation to approve the Exxon contract for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to enter a new... Office to enter a new contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for a 55-month term at a cost not to exceed year one, $42,327.14, year two, $85,636.92, year three, $85,686.92, year four, $85,636.92, and year five, $85,637.10 annually or $384,875,000 for the full 60 months to support body worn cameras, fleet, car cameras, and less lethal tasers and other support services afforded by Axon Enterprises, Inc.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Put story hour to shame. Okay. So I know we have a motion, but before I ask for a second, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on items eight through 20?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Elise Weatherly is here in chambers to speak on item nine.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome back.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. I just wanted to comment a little bit on item number nine. Now, I have not investigated NRS 4.032, but I know you guys have done your work before you come here. I know that you research all this kind of stuff. Since this has to do with the judicial system, I'm just going to let you know that I plan on letting them see my face at the State of Nevada, as in this entire county, there are only two public officials that I would take action against, and I don't know if this falls into the place of that or not, but I would take action against a City of Sparks Justice of the Peace and a Reno Master. There are only two people that I've investigated over the years and going, there's something wrong here. One is an elected position, and I would not vote for Judge Chris Wilson again as long as I live, not because he's not a nice, sweet person, but because he seems to hide for our side with the people that don't do what's right for others. Am I wrong? I could be wrong. Also, Master Greg Shannon. I was questioning him when he was running for office, not realizing that it wasn't for the same position that he was already in, asking him a question, and the next thing you know, I'm being hit with a contempt of court case against my own child support. So all I would say is there's so many things to factor in here. I don't know how you guys do this. Very grateful for item 14, that you guys changed the dates on it to be read, even though it's still in the documentation, you know, that it's July 4th. Well, business doesn't happen on July 4th, so that makes a difference. And I would also check with the judicial system if me rolling down my window on Sun Valley Boulevard and yelling at a guy because he was dragging his dog along, he was a big guy, dragging this poor little chihuahua around, so I yelled out the window, "Stop it." I did the Mr. Mom thing, and a guy had a bike thought I was talking to him, and I go, "No, I'm talking to the guy that's dragging his chihuahua down the street. You can tell the chihuahua is as scared as he can be." And I'm going, "What can I do about that?" Well, I can make a public comment and say thank you for listening. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
I have nobody else signed in.
Okay. We'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Jung. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously.
Hang on one second.
No, you've got the wrong mover. It was Commissioner Lucy. I'm sorry. Did I say?
No, you said Lucy.
The move, the motion was by Commissioner Lucy, Madam Clerk.
What do I have?
We have Commissioner Herman.
Okay. I'll change that.
Please affirm your votes. Thank you so much, Commissioners. All right. Commissioners, we've been here for a while. Do you want to press on, or would you like to take a short break?
Press on, sir.
Okay. Let's keep going. Item number 21, Madam Clerk. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance.
Item 21 will be bill number 1880, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 5, Administration and Personnel by revising provisions to clarify the duties of the county manager and chief information officer, and amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 15, County Finances Purchasing by repealing redundant provisions in the Washoe County Bond Bank Ordinance, adding a section levying a $25 handling charge for payments denied by a bank, and revising provisions related to definitions pertaining to accounting systems and policies, the basis of accounting for various fund, the creation, abolishment of county funds, definitions pertaining to property control, property control requirements, policies and procedures related to donations of property, cash contributions and grant funding, procedures for lost and abandoned property, procedures for receiving cash and negotiable instruments, the collections division, procedures for establishing new accounts, the composition of investment committee, the time period between reviews of rates charged by the county for its various services, overpayments to the county refunds, updating the county policies, responsibilities of the Department of Finance, removing references to the Director of Finance and creating the position of Chief Financial Officer, the powers and duties of the comptroller, the position of Budget Manager, and the powers and duties of the purchasing and contracts manager, including increasing the limit for purchasing supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services from $100,000 or less to $300,000 or less.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, we have Ms. Valetich. Would we, do you want a short presentation on this?
No, thank you.
It's up to you. Ms. Herman, would you like any information from staff? Okay. Ms. Hill, would you like any information from staff?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. All right. It's your lucky day, Ms. Valetich. Everybody understands. Okay. So we have an introduction. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on item number 21?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. Commissioners, I'm looking for an introduction on bill 1880 with a second reading on June 21st.
I will introduce 1880 with a second reading on June 21st, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. All right. We will close item 21. That now takes us to item number 22. Mr. Manager.
I believe Madam Clerk will read that for you, Mr. Chair.
This is, no, this is a public hearing, Mr. Manager.
22 is yours.
Oh.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing.
Item 22 is a public hearing appeal of the Washoe County Board of Adjustments denial of variance case number WPVAR 22-0001, Hertz Callahan side yard setback reduction, which sought a variance to reduce the required side yard setback on the north side of the parcel from five feet to one foot in order to enlarge the existing bedroom wing of the current home on the property and add a second level bedroom. The applicant is Jalen Farr, architecture, and the property owner is Susan Hertz Callahan, family trust at all. The project is located at 1710 Lake Shore Boulevard, Incline Village, Nevada, 89451. The assessor's parcel number is 130-332-12. The parcel of land is approximately .192 acres in size with a master plan designation and regulatory zone of east shore within the Tahoe area plan. Variances are authorized in Article 804 of the Washoe County Development Code.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Lloyd, I know that Vice Chair Hill would like a presentation, so, and I know we have one that's listed, we have the, it looks like PowerPoint.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Floor is yours. Hold on.
Go ahead. Let him go. Let him go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Building. I will run through this fairly quickly, although there is a number of slides. Let me see that this works right. Okay. As indicated, the request is for an appeal of the Board of Adjustments denial of variance to reduce the side yard setbacks from five feet to one foot. The property is located at 1710 Lake Shore Boulevard in Incline Village. For the overhead, the site plan and the, shows the highlighted area, there is the highlighted area with the hashed green, which is the existing location of the house, which is in fact extending into the setback, and the applicants are proposing to extend further into the setback. So currently, it is under a non-conforming situation.
So let me, let me just make that clear. Hold on. Just back up for me, Mr. Lloyd. So it's already into the setback illegally?
It is non-conforming. I'll say that. Again, you're talking about a house that was built back in the, in the 50s.
Okay. All right. All right. So we, so we don't know, but.
Right. And that is correct. And the red line shows the, the property line to the south.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Just want to run through quickly the elevations. This elevation is from the north and the east elevation, showing the proposed second floor bedroom. Also showing the existing and proposed floor plans, as well as the floor plan on the second floor. The property is zoned east shore in the Tahoe area plan. The lot is .192 acres in size, and the setbacks are 20 feet on the front and rear, and, as mentioned, five feet on the sides. Now, variances are limited to situations where the property exhibits special circumstances. Those circumstances are exceptional narrowness, shallowness, and the shape of the property, exceptional topographic conditions, or other exceptional situation or condition specific to the property. The property is not exceptionally narrow. Property is not exceptionally shallow. The property is not exceptionally shaped. There are some exceptional slopes on the property, but not in the front of the property where the proposed expansion is located. The slope is not unique, as there are similar conditions to many properties along this section of Lake Shore Boulevard, as well as the neighboring properties to the north and to the south. The BOA could not make the finding of no detriment, because there is no special circumstances. An approval of the variance would impair the intent of the Development Code. Similarly, the Board of Adjustment couldn't make the finding of no special privileges. The Board of, is this the right one? The Board of Adjustment was able to make the finding of use authorization, as this proposed request is for a residential expansion and is located in a residential zone. And they could also make the finding for an effect on a military, or no effect on a military installation, as that is not applicable at this location. In the event that the Board decides to reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment and approve this variance request, there are conditions in your packet with, as attachment This request, this appeal was adequately noticed. And as indicated again, the Board could not make the necessary findings to approve this variance and deny this, this request. The recommendation is to either affirm the decision of the Board of Adjustment and approve the denial, or reverse the decision and approve the, the variance request. And staff has the following motions for your consideration. That concludes my presentation. I know that the applicant is here, and I believe they do have a presentation as well, and I am available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Lloyd? Vice Chair Hill?
I have no questions for Mr. Lloyd. I'd like to see the applicant's presentation, please.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Madam Clerk, would you put 10 minutes on the clock for me?
Yes, I will.
Chairman, Commissioners, it's been a long time since I've been standing in here, but it's nice to see all of you. I'm Philip Gillenfire, represent the Hertz Callahan property in 1710 Lake Shore that Trevor reviewed with you. So the request is a north side setback reduction to expand an existing bedroom on a wing on an existing home that was built in 1959. Real briefly, Rocky Point is a really different situation, something like Crystal Bay, which many of you know. Crystal Bay was designed as fishing cabins on a very steep area, most of the time used only in the summertime, really with no thought to property lines or setbacks, they were just cabins built out there. Rocky Point is a little subdivision that's beyond Lake Shore. It's actually just before you get to Hidden Beach, so it's actually on Highway 28. It's just this subdivision that's basically south of Ponarosa Ranch, and it's sitting on basically from the lake up to the highway, 36% slope, hit the highway, and you go straight up, 36 to 45% upslope from, immediately from the highway. The neighbors, there are three homes on the uphill side, all three have similar challenges with access there. There was a couple of road abandments that occurred years ago, Romance Avenue was one of them. In the early days, the Hertz Callahan property, they owned both properties, and they were split by Romance Avenue, which was eventually abandoned and split to each parcel. So the situation here is that we are looking at trying to take an existing home and build a second bedroom area there, so that they can utilize this, this older home and still have the family that's growing, live and use the home, but they use primarily in the summertime. We presented to the Board of Adjustment, however, we felt that our special circumstances was not fully addressed or considered, and it was also challenging because Commissioner Hill, or Chairman Hill, not Commissioner Hill, sorry, Chairman Hill from the Board of Adjustment kept going in and out on the internet Zoom, and, and as the chairman, it was very difficult for her to track the conversation. But the special circumstances are that we are exceptional. It is a topographical condition that is extremely severe, 36% upslope, probably would never have built on this property if it was 1990, or 2000, or 2020. This property would not be within the TRPA regulation of allowed to be built on. This is a 36% upslope. So the problem that occurs is that there is no other place to construct an addition for the, for the bedroom addition without utilizing the existing footprint. We're utilizing the addition that was put there probably in 1962 and redoing that for the second story. And that's why there's already existing encroachment, non-conforming encroachment into the setback, and so we're utilizing that same position. But we're also incorporating a staircase on the inside so that there is more of a winter access, and that's what requires that additional little bit of space there. So one of the things that, that I was surprised at, because over the years, TRPA was used in certain situations as recognition of hardship with respect to variances. When I was on the Citizens Advisor Board in Incline, now Trevor reminded me that was like 15 years ago, I thought it was a couple of years back, we did consider certain situations where TRPA was brought into the hardship discussion of the special circumstance. Staff has indicated that that's no longer the case, even though, and they also said that there is situations where, oh, TRPA is a regulatory situation that applies equally to everyone in Lake Tahoe, which is not the case. You have parcels in Tahoe that are Class IV or greater, which is the classification based on the soil type, the slope, and the size of the property, and the ability for it to infiltrate soil or rain, and those Class IV, Class V, Class VI parcels are all deemed to be buildable. And so they can be awarded additional coverage, they can move coverage around into undisturbed locations on their site. But when you get into properties that are Class III, II, or I-A, which is basically very steep, like over 24%, or I-B, which is stream zone, you're limited to doing anything. TRPA restricts you from any involvement in getting, you can't, you can't change your pavers to pervious so you get more coverage, you can't get anything at that point. You're restricted to basically the footprint of the house that you're, and your coverage that you have. They have a very strict policy on relocation findings, so you can't relocate coverage here and put it to an undisturbed location, because staff had indicated in one point that we could just put the bedroom in the back part of the house. Well, that's undisturbed location, and TRPA would never allow that. So we felt like, as in the past, I think TRPA, along with the fact that we have exceptional topographical conditions of 36%, should be an additional consideration, and I would hope that, that that is also considered in the, in the overall program. I think I'm really close here. So I still believe the 36% upslope, we really don't even have the ability to put a garage on this site, and neither does the two neighbors. In fact, In fact, both of them, or all of the neighbors, have sent a letter of support, because they feel like this is a very small, unique situation, and I would say we've designed four homes in that location, or remodeled four homes in that location, and all four of those have had variances because of the special circumstances of steepness or relationship to the highway. And in two of those locations, those homes were awarded variances primarily because of the TRPA restriction, which apparently has been taken off of the consideration list with the senior staff. So, when we go to special privilege, I really do believe that we were not given fair recognition of our special circumstance with the Board of Adjustment, and that's why we're asking for your reconsideration and to overturn the Board of Adjustment's decision. We're not a detriment. We have a number of other parcels in that neighborhood that have had the same situation of variance reductions. The closest neighbor to this particular property, where you saw the yellow line and the red line, that next house is over 36 feet away to the north of this property. We're not making any effect to the drainage or anything there. Surprisingly, that all the adjoining neighbors, including all the neighbors across the street, all were in favor and sent letters to the county staff to support the project. No special privilege, but we indicated that a number of other people in that neighborhood have done similar situations with variance setbacks. So, I hope I've kind of clarified that. I always get nervous when I hear 10 minutes, so I try to talk as fast as I can. So, I hope I covered what was really, the most important part, was that we do have a special circumstance here, and I think it's very, it's a detriment for that property owner to be able to expand his home in any capacity, and primarily because of the steepness of the slope, but also because of the TRPA constraints. I've given a fairly detailed analysis of the TRPA code sections and broke that down for the senior staff. Trevor's looked at those, and I'm not going to say he agrees with me, but he's read them, and he understands the circumstance where there are differentials between parcels in Tahoe, that some of them are much more restrictive than others. So, I would request that the Board of County Commission overturn the Board of Adjustment and approve the variance, and we are more than happy to take the conditions, I think they're Conditions D, that the staff indicated that if you were to overturn it, we would have those conditions, and we have no issues with those conditions. Thank you.
Okay, look at two minutes to spare.
Oh, wow. If you have any questions for me, we can take the two minutes.
Well, that won't cut into your time. That's our time. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Gillenfar. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll.
Thank you. To the applicant, on the neighbor's letters of support, did you receive a letter of support from the neighbor that would have the one-foot setback from this property?
Yes.
The next door neighbor.
Neighbor, the neighbor to the south on the uphill side, and also to the north on the uphill side, yes.
Okay. And then, why can you not, and this was, when I read the minutes from the Board of Adjustments, I didn't understand if this was clarified. Why can you not build up? Why do you need to build on the side?
Well, we have a 1959 structure, and so if we disturb that structure, the Uniform Building Code, or the International Building Code that now comes into play, would require us to pretty much rebuild that entire structure, which would be an enormous cost, where the little addition that you saw on the slide earlier, there's a small addition that was there, probably put in '61, which was just a small little bedroom. So, we're utilizing that existing space, so we don't have to interfere with the existing construction of the existing home. And we can't relocate to another location on the site because of the restrictions that TRPA presented.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion to overturn the decision of the Board of Adjustment and approve what the conditions included in Attachment D of the staff report.
Okay, all right. Hold on just a second. So, I do have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I do have an email that was submitted by Richard and Lillian Dixon in support of approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will close public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak in the audience at this time? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioners, any other questions for staff?
Chairman, I just want, I would like to, if I could.
Please.
Chairman, I know this is Commissioner Hill's district, but I do spend a lot, quite a bit of time in her district, working over the last eight years with her constituent base as well. This area that Mr. Gillenfar has pointed out is extremely constrained and challenged, and I'm in complete support of this allowance and overturning the decision of the Board of Adjustment. The slopes themselves are extremely constraining, and as long, and with the support of the neighbors, I believe that this is well within the purview of this board, and I think it is a smart allowance to continue. And I want to point out and realize that, you know, the state of Nevada did build a walkway behind this property to allow for foot traffic along the west shore, or I should say, the east shore of Lake Tahoe, creating further kind of constraints on this property. So, I mean, these property owners along this area have been challenged, not only with State Route 28, but also the locale of their homes, and kind of the encroachment of the state around them. And so, from my standpoint, this makes all the sense in the world. They're allowing themselves to be constrained by their properties, not to disturb that on the natural area, but try to live within the space that they have, and so this is a reasonable ask, within my opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lucy. Anyone else? Okay, we have asked for public comment. We have heard both from staff and the appellant. So, we have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Go forth and build. Go forth and get permits. All right, thank you so much. Okay, that now takes us to item number 23. Madam Clerk, this is a second reading.
Item 23 is Ordinance Number 1687, an ordinance repealing Chapter 95 governing parks and recreation in its entirety, and by enacting a new Chapter 95 within Washoe County Code by adding, revising, and amending Chapter 95 in its entirety, including but not limited to definitions applicable to the chapter, open space, and regional parks commission, powers and duties of the director enforcement of the chapter, use of vehicles and nonmotorized vehicles, domestic animals, and visitor conduct. It was formerly Bill Number 1877.
And I'm sorry, give me the ordinance number again.
Ordinance Number 1687.
Thank you so much. I apologize. Commissioners, do we need staff to give us any information? This is a second reading. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item number 23?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay, we will close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. I'm looking for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1687.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second. Second by Commissioner Herman. Thank you, Vice Chair Hill. I appreciate that. We've asked for public comment. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Thank you so much. That takes us now to item number 24. Madam Clerk. Actually, Mr. Manager, forgive me.
Thank you. Item 24 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. Commission will also hear a public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that will be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
I have Nicholas St. John signed in, but he is no longer in the audience. And then, I have an email to put on file from Elise Weatherly.
Okay. I don't see Mr. St. John either. Give him a moment, see if he comes in. Okay, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number 25.
Item 25 is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information or Topics for Future Agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything else for us today?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I will close the managers' portion. Commissioners, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a few things that I forgot to add at the beginning of the meeting.
Vice Chair Hill, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to let the Incline Village, Crystal Bay community know that we have started the meetings for the Incline Mobility Hub community input, and we will be meeting again June 27th at 5:30 PM, and we will be discussing the RFQ for consultants to help us find a location, possible location for the mobility hub, and what that mobility hub could look like for the community. So, I'm hoping folks will get involved. We had a great meeting last night, and I think that we're going to have some great dialogue on this. Additionally, I have the Incline Village, Crystal Bay Citizen Advisory Board coming up here on the 6th, and it's a really robust agenda, so I'm hoping folks can join us for that meeting. And those are all my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, anyone else? All right. We are, thank you so much for everyone being here. We are adjourned.